Very good, thank you. All right, let's, let's bring this meeting of the Kingston Planning Board to order. It is January 19th, 2021. It is 6:31 approximately PM. And we have one, we have one hearing on the docket tonight. But we're, we're going to be, we're going to be at this a while tonight, I suspect. So get comfortable and I'm going to use my prerogative also as chair to take breaks periodically. Because it's, it's tough for everybody sitting in chairs looking at the screen. So I'll try to pick times where I think it's, it's a logical break point and we won't be doing long breaks, but enough for people to get up, move around. And so I'll start with the obligatory checklist to make us legal with regard to a remote meeting per, per RSA 91A and the governor's emergency order. So as Chair of the Kingston Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, and that would be And using the password looks like 8542-4204-782. Or by clicking on the web address that is located on the bottom of the planning board's agenda. And if you don't have a copy of that, you can find it on the town's website under the planning board page over on the right-hand side. There will be a link to tonight's agenda and you'll find the, the link to join the Zoom meeting at, at the bottom part of the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the board at www.kingstonnh.org and going to the planning board page under departments. If anybody has a problem, please call. And I'm not sure which number Glenn we're using for calling if someone has an issue.
Um, they could, I could give mine.
Well, I know Ellen is monitoring the planning board's email. So I'm going to give that. And if you, if you wanted to give another phone number, Glenn, you certainly can do that. But if anyone has a problem, the email would be PB as in planning board at kingstonnh.org.
And concurrently, in order to, they could get through to me at 770-9822.
Okay, thank you. So either that email or that phone number, if any of members of the public have an issue joining into this meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance and when each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required by the right to know law. Okay. All right, so.
And Glenn?
Yes, Glenn.
Um, I've just got a text that says if, if someone were to call the planning board office number directly, it gets keyed right to our email. And then Ellen would be seeing that as well.
Oh. Oh, well, that's terrific. I didn't know that, that, that we had that functionality.
Yes.
So, so that's an alternate way to reach us by phone if you're having difficulty and that phone number is 603-642-3342, extension six, which will get you to the planning board's number and Glenn tells me that it will, it will get over to the planning board email, which is being monitored by, by Ellen. All right. Okay, so we're going to start by doing a, a roll call for planning board members. And when I call your name, if you just state your presence and whether you're in the room alone or whether there's somebody with you. Peter Coffin?
Uh, present, Ellie's in the house, but not in the room.
Okay, Robin Dugay?
Sorry, uh, present and alone.
Thank you. Lynn Merrill?
Present alone.
Richard Wilson?
Present alone.
Peter Bakie?
Present alone.
All right, Chris Bashaw? Is Chris with us? I don't see his name on the screen yet. All right, so I'll just hold off on that one for the time being. Uh, and I'm Glenn Koppelman, present, and I am alone here in my home, in my room. So we do have, I think I saw Steve Padfield with us, yes?
Yes.
Yep, I'm here, present and alone.
All right, thank you, Steve. Uh, yeah, if until, until Chris Bashaw shows up, I'd like you to be our voting member in his place and that will give us a full seven-member board.
Okay.
Okay, and if somebody notices him coming in and I don't see it, if you could let me know, that would be great. And we will, and then we'll switch back to him and let Steve take back his alternate role. Okay. But until that time, Steve Padfield will be a voting member. Okay, so as I said, we have one item on the agenda tonight. It is a continuation of a subdivision and site plan proposal for 266 Route 125 LLC located at 266 Route 125 in Kingston. Tax map is R41 lot 17-1. And the legal notice reads that the planning board will be. Oh, I started this too early, didn't I? All right, I'm going to finish reading this and then because we're technically not supposed to start this till 6:45. So let me just finish reading the legal notice and then I'll, I'll pause and we'll start it back up again.
Excuse me, Glenn?
Hello?
Excuse me, Glenn, I just got a notice, Chris is in the waiting room waiting to get into the meeting. He has to be accepted.
Oh, Glenn, have you got that?
Do indeed.
All right.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. There he is.
Hey, Chris? I've been in waiting room limbo for a couple of minutes. Don't get me wrong, I was, I was a few minutes jump, late jumping in.
That's fine, that's fine. So Steve Padfield, you're back to your alternate role.
Okay, thank you.
Feel free to participate in the discussion as you, as you wish. But Chris Bashaw, would you just state your presence and whether you're alone or not?
Yeah, I'm at home. My wife is currently in the other room. My kids will be home at some point.
Your volume is a little low, Chris. I don't know if you can adjust that.
See what I can do here. Uh, but I am currently alone.
Okay.
My wife is in the other room and my kids will be in it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a full sitting board of our regular members now and we have one alternate member sitting in at the table as well. So I was just finished, I did call the roll, Chris, I was just finishing the legal notice. Mentioning that this is a continuation of the application, it's a subdivision to subdivide one lot into four and a site plan for one of those lots for a new warehouse distribution facility. And then redevelopment of the existing warehouse facility and office. And there are conditional use permits requested as well on this and we'll be getting into those tonight. All right, we've got a couple of minutes before we hit 6:45. But we do have we have a couple of sets of minutes to deal with and rather than waiting till the end of what's probably going to be a fairly long meeting. If the board is prepared to deal with those now, we could, we could dispense with that item. One set of minutes from December 1st and then another from December 15th.
If there's no corrections to be made, I'm ready to move that we accept the minutes for December 1st, 2020 as submitted.
Motion by Peter Coffin on the December 1st minutes.
Second.
Second by Richard Wilson. Any discussion on those corrections or adjustments? Questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call the roll for this. If you would just state yay or, or nay on the December 1st minutes or extensions if you, if you feel you need to do that. Peter Coffin?
Aye.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that passes unanimously. And now the December 15th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Now, second that, this is Peter Coffin.
All right, motion by Richard Wilson, second by Peter Coffin. Uh, any discussion on those? Okay, I assume you're ready for the vote and I'll call the roll. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn is a yes, so that's unanimous as well. All right, thank you. Uh, that, I don't have any other critical correspondence. Glenn, do you know of any that, that?
I'm not aware of any, no.
Okay. Okay, uh, we're, we're close to 6:45 now, we can, we can get going with the hearing. Uh, I've read you the, uh, the legal notice. Uh, I see that we do have the representatives from the applicant here with us. And we have a, a number of members of the public sitting in. So here's, here's what I'd like to do. Uh, just to, just to kind of set the stage for tonight. We'll, we'll first start by getting an update from, from the applicant and Carl, when, when it's time for you to, to lead this off, I would really appreciate it if you could keep your remarks to changes that have been made to the plan since the last time we saw them. The last couple of meetings, we spent quite a bit of time going over material that, that we had talked about previously and so because the board has a lot of things to discuss tonight, I think it's probably prudent to to start with perhaps the changes to the last set of plans and, and that'll, that'll keep us moving a little bit better. And if we need to go back and backtrack on any details, we can do that, but but that's, that's how I'd like to do that. Uh, we will we'll then get into some board discussion. I suspect there's going to be a fair amount of that. Uh, we have department head comments. Uh, we have comments from our planner and from our town engineer. And we also have a preliminary, uh, report on the hydrogeologic study. And I don't know if Dana is with us yet, but, but we do have, we do have that document with us and hopefully she'll be here to, to discuss that with us. It is one of the requirements for this project, uh, as it is on the aquifer and because it does exceed a certain number of gallons per day on the septic. Let's see. A little bit into the meeting, I'm also going to briefly go through a number of pieces of correspondence that we've received from a Butters and other interested parties. We won't be reading the entire letters there, there, it would take us probably more time than we even have in this meeting. But, but I do plan to at least go through them chronologically from when our last meeting was till today. And give you the names and addresses of those individuals who wrote and just to do a kind of a quick summary of the comments in each of those letters. At, at some point in the meeting, we'll open it up for a live public comment. And certainly, uh, anyone who wishes to expound on the letters that they've submitted can do that as, as a live participant. And, and others can, can join in as well. And the way we're going to do that is the way we did it at the last meeting, which is through the chat function. So until we open it up for public comment, you'll notice that the chat function is disabled. So you, you won't be able to use it, but once we open it up for public comment, we will ask you to put your name and address in if you wish to speak or make a comment. And we'll use that as our, as our queuing list for, for opening it up and giving you permission to speak or ask a question as you, as you wish. I'll go over that again, once we get to that point, but I just want you to be comfortable in knowing how we're going to proceed so that you're, you're not sitting there waiting, wondering, well, gosh, when am I going to have a chance to talk? So uh, it'll be a little while because we have, we have a number of things that the board needs to discuss prior to that. I also expect that we're, we're going to be getting into some significant discussion on the conditional use permits tonight. I certainly would hope that we would be in discussion on those. So the board should be prepared and thinking about that. Okay. And I see Dana has joined us. Thank you, Dana.
Yes.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. After, after we get an update from the applicant and, and take any board comments initially, we'll then get into comments from you and Dennis and Glenn. So okay. Uh, any questions from the board before I start the process? Okay. All right, Carl, I'm assuming that, that you're speaking on behalf of the applicant and perhaps you could start by, as I said, giving us an update on changes that have taken place to the plan since the last time we saw them.
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Uh, could you crank it up just a tad?
Okay, can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay, uh, so my name is Carl and um, we also have some other members of our team on here, I believe I'm checking through, but I see some familiar names on there, so uh, I think we have our traffic engineer and our hydro scientist here as well. And so anyhow, thank you. So where we left off, uh, from our last board meeting and from the, the reviews that we received was we went back and actually substantially changed the plans again. And, um, we took that very seriously. We did it over the holiday, holidays and everything. We worked hard and we got it done and submitted. And also the reviewers have been very, very good in staying on top of our changes and actually responding and, uh, giving us very significant suggestions and just moving things right in the right direction on quality. And, uh, we've been, uh, working great together and so the plans have been substantially changed and I'll just, just briefly overview, I'm going to probably just share the screen and go to the overview plan. So I can do that here. Just give me one second, I was going to get my caliber. Okay. Sorry, wrong plant. I'll find it. Uh, anyhow, the, 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 some of the takeaways that we've done on, on this are I'm sorry, I just, I just got to get to the right wrong one. Bear with me one second, I just have to. Here it is. All right, so we are pleased to state that there will be no access on Route 107. There won't be any development over there and you can see that in this, uh, the left side of the screen. So no emergency access. We worked out better provisions within the site on driveway access and circulation and emergency cross connects within the site within these curb cuts along 125 and getting around the, the buildings and opening up, uh, better access all the way around. Uh, so that, uh, so we do not need to have an emergency access onto Route 107 at all for any reason. Therefore, all the woodlands, all the natural vegetation over there, the shoreland area, all that is being preserved as just the way it is. No proposed work whatsoever, no emergency drives, no vehicles, no emergency vehicles, no nothing. Uh, no utilities. Uh, we did actually add a, a, a better sound fence, an acoustic fence, uh, it's one similar they use in California for, for these, these types of purposes. And we added that into the, the plan set along that section over there, all the way down to the 100-foot wetland buffer. So that was a big change because not only did we take out things and take out access drives and take out all that, but we had to redesign the interior of the site to accommodate the adversity access ways and codes and everything and we did that. The other, the other thing that we made, Mr. Chair, uh, was that we reduced the size of the building. And, uh, we had two rear corners of the building, if you remember on our site walks, that were in the shoreline district. That's allowed for the setbacks, but we, you know, we've been hearing you and the Butters and everybody concerned. Uh, so we basically chopped off the building in the back there and and you know, just the right thing to do and to say that we do not have any proposed buildings in the shoreline uh, district whatsoever. And not only did we do that, but we also, I hate to use the word chopped, but we, we basically chopped off the backside of this site tremendously, uh, all the way, all the way around here. Uh, so we increased the, uh, the buffers to Little River. We've increased the vegetation that's natural. We've actually replanted the edges as well, but the, the accessways, the pavement, everything in back here has been substantially reduced. Uh, we moved some parking out of there that we didn't need. We actually moved the water building uh, out of the 150-foot, uh, it, you know, out of that, actually out of the whole district. Uh, so we, we did a lot out here, uh, in the back. That, that precipitated a complete redesign. It just, you know, dominoes through the whole site. When we chop off these extensive areas and we did that. Um, the other thing we've done is on the wetland buffers, over the months that we've been designing this, uh, we've been hearing, uh, well, okay, you're in the buffer a little bit for a drainage piece here. You're in the buffer for a little bit of utilities. You're in the buffer here for a little bit of temporary grading and restoration. Uh, and every time, uh, we, we come back and say, oh, you know, okay, so you know, we, we basically chopped that off as well. So we're not in the wetland buffers for any proposed work uh, at all. That's all being retained, uh, around the Little River. There, there is a, a small wetland in the middle of the site that we already have a permit on. And that has obviously a, a buffer around that. So that's the only buffer we're, we're disturbing, but we do have a permit on that and I'd like to just step you through one little piece of a plan to explain that. So and I think Dana had one comment along with, uh, Dennis about two pipe outlets that are existing in the wetland buffer right now along in back of the warehouse here, the existing, and we're going to be prepping those, actually eliminating one, I believe, and then, and then just adding a little bit more protection to another, which actually gets less flow than it does now. But other than that, the wetland buffers now are being retained on the site. This wetland in the middle here has a permit on it, has a buffer around it though. Um, and that's shown on the plan. Uh, so by the numbers, basically, uh, there's some existing grandfathered areas that we saw along the backside of the office building and the backside of the warehouse and some fire apparatus that'll be retained. But basically, everything, everything is undisturbed. Uh, and you know, yeah, that, that's pretty good. We're very, very proud to be able to say that. We're out of, out of there completely, even though the conditional use permit, um, would technically allow us to be in there in little edge areas, but we even took those away. The other thing I'd like to point out is, uh, this, this is a change where it, it has been approved and solidified, uh, and that's our mitigation program. So we did, uh, and as you probably already know by now, but we did with the help of the town negotiated, uh, preservation, mitigation area, uh, preservation. Uh, the Alessio Conservation easement purchase, that's 35 acres in Kingston. So we're preserving, uh, and growing, actually growing open space in Kingston. Uh, where the state was, you know, going to probably throw it somewhere else in this, uh, elsewhere, but we fought hard and the town really fought hard to actually preserve 35 acres in town for that. And that's associated with the wetland permit that the DES issued. And the Army Corps actually weighed in on that voluntarily. They can weigh in on any permit, as you know, and they weighed in on this one particularly and said they had no problem with this whatsoever. Uh, so that, that area there, 35 acres is being preserved. Uh, we probably have about 28 to 30 acres of, of preserved uh, buffers that we're not touching on our own site, uh, with these substantial design changes. So, so that, you know, we're really proud to be able to have delivered that. Uh, and listening to the board and, 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 you know, people around town and on social media and that type of thing. So, uh, that's a significant, uh, significant change. Uh, the other thing we've done, significant changes is I talked about the shoreline areas and you know, this was a big issue with, with, uh, the project and, and you know, even though when, when you go through all the shoreline ordinances, uh, there, there's a lot of variables there, a lot of criteria that we have to meet and we certainly met that. Uh, and, and you know, you guys want us to do more, do more than that. And, uh, I like to say, you know, that we're happy to say that we have. And, um, so we meet the criteria for every single one of these lots. Um, we meet the percentages of, of, uh, everything, maximum, minimum. Um, there's also in the shoreline buffer, there's a, uh, a provision in the ordinance that asks, you know, that it basically says work within the 75-foot buffer of that and we have no work now. This table is brought down to zero. Uh, obviously, we're not touching anything within 75 feet of any new work, uh, in the shoreline buffer at all. And that's 100% preserved um, as it should be now with, with your input. And that's within the wetland buffer as well. So obviously, if we're, if we're holding the 100, 100-foot, we're holding the 75 and we're not asking for any of those provisions at all. Um, so we do meet the undisturbed percentages of every lot. Um, and we meet the, uh, impervious totals for every lot. Uh, and we're, you know, we're only about 75% of the allowed impervious within the shoreline district. Uh, so you know, before we were at 100% and we brought it down to 90, we're, you know, we're only at three-quarters percent of the allowed impervious in that district. Uh, so I think in some, some sense, uh, some people at the last meeting were saying, well, how do you, how do you jurisdiction this? How do you make an opinion? How do you measure how much is, is, is being proposed and is that too much or does it meet the regulations? And you know, that's why we have the regulations. There's several and I don't want to waste the board's time, but there's so many variables that we are held to to tell us how much and, and, uh, limit, uh, limit on setbacks and areas and everything. And we, we meet those really, really well now. The, uh, the other item on changes is, uh, in the shoreline district, there's another variable that talks about slopes, steep slopes, which are slopes of over 15%. And before we were in those slopes and we were, you know, just barely meeting the criteria. Uh, now we're only impacting, we're, we're allowed to impact 25% of those slopes. Now we're only impacting about half of that. Uh, so we're, we're, you know, just as, just as an acid test, we're only working within half of the steep slopes that we would normally allow to be worked in, uh, in the district. So I'm just giving you some, some basic overview areas uh, and, and points that are in the plans that talk about where are we? Uh, you know, how, how do you jurisdiction, how much is, is too much or do you meet the criteria and how much do you meet it by? And we're, you know, again, three-quarters on the impervious, we're actually half now, what's a We're actually half now what's allowed uh in the old, in the ordinance, following your your own ordinance, we're only half of that for uh the slope. So that's just another example of the significance of the changes that we've made. The other thing that we've done, I'm not gonna get into all the heavy plans on this, but uh. Uh the uh the septic systems, um we spread those throughout the site uh more, we had uh one system that was. Particularly a dual system that was near the river and we pulled that apart and and moved. Half of it around to another area, so we could uh basically take the the flows on this and spread them out. Uh significantly around the the, you know, the the big site uh and not have any point loads, so we did that. Um we also uh put all our septic systems on Aqua Point by our clear pre-treatment with uh monitoring. Uh threshold uh requirements of twelve milligrams per liter at the distribution box before it even goes into the system. So uh that's uh, that's another really good, good, high-quality thing of all of our systems now are way, way below. What would be, you know, normally required, uh I think you're at ten milligrams per liter, uh I know the scientists are on here, uh. Uh but uh that's before we even get into the leach fields at all and those provide, you know, a good amount of treatment. So we have all those active treatment systems plugged into every single one of these uh components. Um and uh I I just have to thank uh e- especially Dana and Dennis uh and Glenn, but Dennis uh. Town engineer, we threw a lot at him, we threw over a hundred pages of of, you know, another five hundred pages of uh. Drainage calculations and, you know, more stress tests, more uh recharge, more treatment, we did all that. Uh Dennis will probably go through, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. Dennis will probably go through his review memo, um he probably has maybe five or six, seven items that are, uh I read through them, I just got the memo. Uh we have no problem at all with any of Dennis's items, uh they're very detailed, uh. He he dug into these plants, he spent a lot of time on these, cuz I know he found, he found little things that uh. You know, like an invert of an outlet control system or anything like that, he really went into these things and uh. So he has five, five items that we have no problem with whatsoever. And uh and it doesn't require a massive change on any plans whatsoever, now this is a little details uh dotting eye crossing the T type of thing. Um I'm sure he'll go through his own memo, um also uh Tim Stone is here, uh our scientist and he's been uh. Working hard, uh delivering a lot of information to Dana, uh your scientist and she's been uh. Great at at studying them and 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 really making some good suggestions and back and forth. So we did a lot of that uh over the past month as well and uh she has a review memo that I think that. Uh she's gonna go through and Tim, Tim can give some updates as well, but just from uh engineering standpoint. Is uh we have no problem at all with Dana's memo, uh she has items in there that are um. They're asking us to provide a little bit more information on X, a little bit more information on Y to confirm a few items, she's asking us to uh. Bump up uh although we did bump up a lot of recharge and everything, she's asking us with her own heuristic calculations. To add even more and uh from a uh on one. Item, I think it might be around, you know, we're at forty percent, need to be at fifty, the way she's calculating it, we have no problem doing that. Uh I know that our engineers can actually deliver on that very, very easily. Within the systems that we already have designed and we can, you know, bump out a a system, make it a little bit bigger and this and that, we have tons of capacity, we. We have no problem, I just wanna let people know that right up front, we have no problem with any of that at all, um so uh. Those are the major changes of the plan, I can get into a lot of details and, you know, go through all the grading utility plans and everything else, but uh. Uh those are the big items, is basically taking this project and. And really, really ramping up the uh the buffers to Little River and uh that's really the takeaway, Mr. Chair. Uh we did a lot of other, a lot of other changes that went into that to make that happen, but um. Uh you know, we're proud to be able to have pulled those so far away that if anyone looked at any of the criteria. Any of the quantitative criteria, we we more than meet that that those items and now we're into some qualitative items. That uh we are actually finishing up now and uh we're we're very, very happy and we're very proud to be able to deliver this project. And uh um that's really about it, I I won't get into every little sheet, but uh there were, there were a lot of changes.
Oh, okay, Carl. I think that's a good overview for the board and for the members of the public. For now, uh as we go through the evening, if uh you know, if other things come up that. Yeah, that need us to get into detail on some of the sheets, you can always, you can always pull those up and we can go into that. Um I I would like you to just, and and again, not a lot of detail, but. Uh one of the changes that you said you made from the last time, based on some suggestions from the public. Uh was a change to the fencing on the properties on the Route one oh seven side. Uh because originally, it was going to be, I believe, stockade fence with vegetative plantings. And it sounds like you were talking about a change to that, so I. I think it would be good for for the board certainly to see it and maybe the public as well.
Yes, uh so this is just one summary sheet here, but uh. Before, I think we had a a uh, we started with some chain link fencing and that type of thing and then we went to a a more of a, just a. Standard old six-foot stockade fence. Um we we, you know, this project will be. Required to meet the uh the sound of the noise ordinance in town and there's very specifics to to all of that, the decibel readings and everything. At property lines and 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 that type of thing, uh but we just, we upgraded the the detail of that that fence. Um it's called an acoustic barrier fence and uh we have the details in the plans for that, it's um. It's used very successfully in in some towns in California where they have a lot of mixed use. Uh you know, development, where they have, you know, tighter houses like this across the way on Monarch and then. They have, you know, a a retail site or an industrial site nearby, this this is actually, I mean, we're about six hundred feet away, but uh.
Carl, is it, is it, is it possible for you to just tell us how tall it is and what the material is?
It's, it's a, uh, well, it's still a six-foot fence, but it's not a loose fence, it's a tight fence, it has tongue and groove uh materials. Thicker wooden material and it also goes right down to the ground, um so uh. You know, it it's, it's not a highway noise barrier, um. Uh it it's still a a stockade fence, but we just upgraded the detail on that and uh. Uh so you know, just like, let you know what it is, it, so it's called an acoustic fence, but it's, you know, just to let you know. You know, it's not a highway noise barrier, it's concrete and, you know, twenty feet tall or anything. Uh but so just, just to let you know that, but um we did put that in. It's not required in in the regulations, but what we are required to do is meet the noise ordinance and we wouldn't be in violation. If we weren't meeting that, so this whole area now, you know, there's no access, there's no anything out here. Uh we're required to pr- provide a fifty-foot buffer. And plant that up and, you know, and we've done, we've done that and and more than that, uh and just added the acoustic fence is as well.
Okay.
And and this is, you know, as you know, this, we're buffering this, this is commercial zone as well, so we're buffering to a commercial zone, but there is a residence. Uh down here, you know, on on uh Route one oh seven, as you know, there's another one down in, down here and then the Monarch uh folks across the street. They are in that residential district.
Yeah, and just to be clear, uh Carl, uh and I know you know this, uh just because those lots are zone commercial. Uh the current use of them is residential and therefore it's a uh, it's a, it's a commercial use of butting against the residential use and. Therefore, the buffering is required, so I mean, you.
That's, that's correct.
I know that you know this, uh but I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear on that. Okay, thanks Carl, appreciate that update. If you can stop sharing that screen now, that would be great, okay. Okay, why don't we um, why don't we get into some of the board discussion and and as we, as we get into that and as we get into Dennis's and Glenn's and Dana's. Uh discussion, you know, there, there will be more, more things to talk about, I'm sure, with regard to the plans. Of a specific nature, so uh before I ask for Dennis, Glenn and Dana to to get into their. Uh to their memos, uh are there, are there any immediate questions or comments from board members?
I did have one question that occurred to me when I was looking at this, uh and regarding the subdivisions, um and I'm kinda curious as to. As to why there is a subdivision of all these parcels that are gonna be combined, combined driveways, combined uh septic systems and everything. Um it seems a lot, since it's not gonna be a condominium, these are separate lots, um I I'm trying to figure out what the advantage of the subdivision. Plan is.
Uh well, maybe Carl, you can answer that for us.
All these are uh subdivided frontage lots that meet the criteria, um there, it it, we usually call this a administrative subdivision. And it really comes down to value uh and ownership and responsibility. So in terms of the value, ownership and responsibility, uh for instance, the uh the existing office building will be wholly owned by a. Entity that uh takes pride in their office building and uh they'll be responsible for all that, but also part of. You know, basically a, an agreement with easements and uh uh on maintenance and everything else, but that that would be an office user. Which would be different than, you know, the warehouse user, uh but uh a lot of times on these things, uh in terms of uh construction, financing. Assessing, uh I I believe that it would actually be a cleaner assessment. Package on these where there are separate lots with inter- interconnections on utilities and access. Uh it's just a lot easier for the ownership entities, they're gonna be pouring millions and millions of dollars into this. Project and that's gonna reflect in the uh assessment of each lot, which is individual. It also helps us with phasing and uh substantial completion on each. And uh it it basically, when we find that we can do an administrative subdivision on something like this. It 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 really benefits the town, not only the owner, of course, but the town in terms of control and assessed value. Um this could be, I mean, sir, you made a point that this could just be one lot. In your ordinance, it allows to be one lot, but uh if we can actually put the lot lines in, uh it it just really um. The the town assessor would probably like that a little bit more, uh I know the owner does and the end users would and that reflects in pride of ownership. And also higher, higher values, which means, you know, help to to everybody. There's, there's no reason why we can't do it and if we can and add that value, then we certainly would and we're delivering on that.
Okay, thank you, that does uh does clarify that for me, um and I just had a question for our planner, um. And that is, we had cases come up before where when a pre-existing non-conforming lot was subdivided. Those, what we call, referred to as grandfathering conditions, no longer take effect and that happened in this past year. Um down one twenty-five a ways from this, um on the east side, I can't remember the name of the lot, but um. It it had to go for variance and got it, but that uh, is that not a a problem with the um existing non-conforming lots?
No, because they're creating them to a size that's that's conforming.
Right, I was thinking the um setbacks, the wetland setbacks on the existing office building and and warehouse.
No, because they're not proposing changes to those setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions from the board at the, at this time? All right, let's uh, let's get into um uh into our, our three, three expert. Items uh from, from the town side and I'd like to. I think it might be good to start with Dennis and go from Dennis to Dana and then Glenn, you can bat cleanup on your, on your end, how's that?
Works for me.
All right.
Uh hey, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I got copies of the plans on January eighth. Uh the full copies, uh ninety-five sheets and the uh did get revised, pre and post-development. Uh drainage analysis on the fourteenth of January, uh. So after review, um I, I mentioned the changes that took place, which Kyle just went through. So there's no sense in re- uh rereading that, uh it just reviews the same, the paragraph reviews the same changes. That he just talked about, uh previous comments were were, that were addressed, uh I've deleted and others. Uh that weren't, uh I just left them in italics and I'm not sure if they were satisfied or not, um but I offer the following comments. My previous comment number five was uh the conditional use requirements that used. That the use will not cause significant reduction in the long-term water volume contained in the aquifer.
Dennis, you you went, you went mute. Dennis?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you must have hit the button.
Uh something happened there. You were, so where was I?
Well, you were, um you were, you were uh on the, uh our number, your comment number five.
Okay, all right, it was, it was about the, yeah, about the water volume, uh and so the the. Stormwater analysis showed a significant increase in the volume, uh reducing the groundwater recharge, so. I have been consulting with Dana Trusslow regarding my concerns for the aquifer, for the impact of the aquifer. Uh as a result of the large volume of increased runoff from the site during live storm events. Uh perhaps her review and evaluation will result in whether there is an impact to the aquifer or not. Uh my comment number thirty-two, uh which uh was on sheet D four. Uh it's a detail on the outlet control structure and the elevations don't match. Uh what is shown on the December third calculations and also what's shown on the grading and drainage plans that we just submitted. And so uh those were for for invert elevations, B one and B C, uh those uh. Outlet structures for the detention basin, so it's just, that's just a drafting thing that uh just wanna make sure there's no conflict when it comes time to put. When they get built, that there's no debate or uh a misunderstanding of of what the elevations are on the the different. Uh parts of the plan set. Uh number forty-two, uh in this recent submittal, the design team has chosen use, to use porous pavement. On the site for the parking area, uh for the existing building to infiltrate more stormwater. Uh the town of Kingston typically does not allow porous pavement in parking areas. If porous pavement is not allowed, then the impervious area within the Shoreland Protection District is over the limit of maximum allowed. On lots one D and one C, drainage calculations will need to be adjusted accordingly also. On December eighth, I received a memorandum from Mr. Dubay. The purpose was to address my concerns for downstream impacts uh from the increased volume of storm or runoff from the site during live storm events. The document states there are only a few handful of houses and commercial lots along the four miles of Little River prior to the Exeter River. And virtually all of the river complex is surrounded by natural areas undeveloped, except for the old town dump, fields and wetlands. Uh landforms and soil information was provided, he states that based on the sheer size and capacity of the receiving resources. The design shouldn't po- couldn't possibly dry up a backyard garden or flood out uh a residential basement. Uh my additional comments, uh number fifty-five. Uh modify the outlet uh drainage pipes from the existing building on lot B one. The uh pipe outlets should be farther away from the edge of Little River, they're right close to the edge of river, they're existing pipes. And there isn't a very good outlet, um uh control erosion, uh control there, riprap or level spreader. Uh so I suggest uh that uh they uh do something with that and have a better dispersment from the runoff from that outlet. Uh actually, uh. Uh that, that, there's two outlets, yeah, uh from that building, on sheet thirty-seven. It's the number fifty-six, the stormwater detention basin on the northeast corner of lot D one has been changed. It now is outside the proposed easement area and the easement area needs to be changed to include the basin and that's on that existing lot. That's in front of this right along one twenty-five. the basin and that's on that existing lot that's in front of this right along 125, that's that lot and there's a detention basin within that lot. And they did change the basin, but they didn't change the easement area. So that's something that just again, another drafting situation. Number 57, on sheet 37, the chamber infiltration basin has been added to the process, to process the stormwater runoff parking area on the west side of the existing building. Plans must show the pipe size and type of, and the type from catch basin C1, C2 and C3. The outlet from the basin, the outlet control manhole and downstream manholes must have inverse outlet pipe sizes and, and type. I mean, graphically, he shows that there are pipes there, but there aren't any elevations that on the plan. So when someone is to go to construct those, they need to, to know what those, what the type of pipe is and the, the, the size of the pipe and what the elevations are. And, you know, that completes my review, but I did go through the drainage calculations that they provided. Their methodology is, is certainly standard methodology and reviewed all of that that was presented. I don't have any comments about that. As far as the, the, the proposed structures that they've, that they've included and their design. I don't really have any problem with that except for the porous pavement. That I have a question on and that's something for the board to determine whether they're going to allow porous pavement, pervious pavement on this site. In the parking areas. So that completes my review at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. All right, Dana, you're still with us, I see. We, the planning board received a copy of your report. It's, now, I need, I, I want to make sure that we're all clear on this. It's dated January 19th. But it says that it's preliminary. Is it, is it in fact still preliminary?
Um, it, no, it, it probably should not have said preliminary. It's, it's a, it's a supplemental hydrogeologic review.
Oh, okay. All right, great.
It was a holdover.
Okay, so if, if, if you, if you could kind of walk this, walk us through this and, and give us your thoughts.
Sure. Well, you received my previous comments, which were preliminary hydrogeologic review comments. And working with Stone Hill, there were several questions about past site uses. There was a request for additional well installation to evaluate the impacts of the existing septic system. There was several questions about some hydrogeologic information that was provided and I went over that with Tim and the project team and they did some additional sampling in addition to the well installation. And so those results were provided yesterday. And so I've since done the, the review comments which you got today. And I will go through those rather than go through the original comments since, you know, most of them were addressed. So as I said, the, the site use history was provided. And there was a, a number of small quantity generators in the past that occupied the building. There was a 30,000 gallon underground heating tank removal, which with some testing was then later closed by DES so that there's no remaining water quality or soil quality impacts. It was noted that there is, well, there are floor drains that drain to the septic system in the existing warehouse. And for a number of reasons, not just because the septic system is going to be eliminated, that I asked that those floor drains be eliminated. And I was told this afternoon that, that that would be part of the program, that they would close those drains so that it would no longer drain to you, the outdoors or any other surface location. I did have some additional questions on the, the, the proposed use of the building. I know that it's been called a distribution facility and warehouse facility. My concern was regarding the repair of equipment because on a scale that this building is going to be, there's certainly going to be equipment that needs to be repaired. I would imagine that it's going to be onsite repair, not offsite repair. So just in the spirit of making sure that there isn't any hazardous material use greater than a small quantity generator. I think that that information still could be provided. I've been told that they'll comply by whatever requirements are required, but a little more information would have been helpful. In terms of groundwater monitoring network, I, I mentioned that additional wells were installed. One of the concerns for the septic system was that there were solvents and petroleums used in the past in the building. And that since there is flooding drain discharge, that there might have been some impacts to water quality from that septic system. And although the water quality concentrations were low, there was some taliwin and xylene detected in the monitoring well. So that was worth having done that work. The other thing is there's a fairly high concentration of chloride at that location, which shows the impact from the septic system itself. The septic system is going to be removed. And we'd asked as well to have some additional work done when the, when the septic system was removed to assure that any contaminated soils beneath the septic system would be tested and removed as needed. And that's also been agreed to as part of, of the response to my comments. All right. So as terms of the nitrate loading. There is a good septic system that's being proposed. Carl mentioned 12 milligram per liter of concentration of nitrate, which I was happy to hear because one of my questions was regarding the, the differences that I'm seeing in the concentration of the affluent from the two treatment units. And because of the very, you know, sensitive nature of the river and groundwater. Their predicted concentration of nitrate was at or very close to the 10 milligram per liter limit. So I'm comfortable with the 12 milligram per liters that affluent limit, which Carl mentioned earlier. Dennis brought up the groundwater recharge question and, you know, this is one that I think is one of the key requirements that the, the board has in terms of anything within the act for protection zones. We looked at it carefully. And basically from some calculations, it looks like there's going to be a 10% difference in recharge in the impervious areas. So that there'll be an overall reduction in the recharge to the site. And that's what therefore impact the volume of groundwater potentially in the subsurface. The other thing that concerns me about this, because there's less water going in, that could potentially, you know, concentrate the, the runoff that we're going to be getting from the site. We know we're going to get some salt dissolution into the groundwater. We've already seen in some of the monitoring wells that there's impacts from salt usage at the site. And that's one of the key concerns for water quality impacts at the site. Based on a conversation with Tim Stone this afternoon, he did mention that Dubay was going to be looking at getting additional recharge into the system. And that would be very helpful to the overall quality of the, the project. The one thing that, you know, I point out here in the letter, not to get too into the weeds on this, but because the groundwater and surface water are so interconnected here, we've got a very sandy material. That what groundwater flows from the sand and gravel right to the river, there's a really close connection. And in the summertime and late, late summer, early fall is when you have very low surface water levels, which I'm sure you've noticed at this river as well as other rivers. And when there's less discharge from a site, you'll have less discharge to the river. Therefore, those base levels may be impacted at the Little River. So I think finding additional recharge is important for, for the site. Integrity. So I guess hand in hand with that is the impact of the road salt or, or whatever de-icing compounds are going to be used at the site. And I understand that the green snow flow, green snow pro program is going to be used, which should help in reducing a lot of the salt issues. But I didn't have anything quantitative to really judge that from. But I understand that Carl has some information, which I haven't seen yet, that, that can, you know, justify a fairly large reduction, but I think that I like to, you know, look at those kinds of things and see it with my own eyes. So I would like to see that information before there's any decisions made. We went over the discharge pipes from the roof drains. I understand one of them's going to be out of use anyway, so that's going to be abandoned and the, the, the other discharge pipe area will need some restoration just so that there isn't further erosion and degradation in that area. Impervious surfaces, there was a slight disagreement in my mind about the, the, the percent of impervious cover, just because from what I could see, the detention ponds, which are lined, were not considered impervious surface. And I believe, and Dennis concurred, that those should be considered impervious areas. So I'm not sure if that adjustment has been made already, but I did want to point that out. See. Those were the major points. There was also one question that Dennis also raised about the Little River storm flow and the increase in volume. And I think this stretch of river can handle the additional volume, but there is a, a fairly narrow dam and a small, small-ish culvert that goes under Route 2125. So I think just to point that out and to make sure that there aren't going to be any impacts to that dam and the and the culvert flow. So those are the, those are my overall comments on the project and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dana, did you, I know that you've got it written here. I mean, you have sort of a summary and an assessment. Did you want to just kind of put a bow on it or, or were you not going to do that?
In terms of yea or nay?
No, in turn, in terms of, I mean, you've, you've, you've sort of laid out the, you know, the, the data and your, and your specific points. But the if it would be, I, I don't know if it would be helpful, it might be. I mean, you, you have summarized it at the end of the memo, so.
Sure, sure. I'll go back through that. I, I kind of pulled that in as I was talking about each point, but I'll go ahead and, and go back through it because I think it would be helpful to hear it again. So what I did was I looked at the conditional use criteria and pulled each one of them out that applied in this situation and just provided a, an assessment of that. So the first condition is the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution or by increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential pollutants. And my assessment of that is the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential pollutants will be increased by this project. The measures being taken for site design will help to mitigate impacts. But the infiltration of runoff from parking lots being so intensively used as proposed will likely impact water quality. Impacts have already been documented at existing wells from road salt dissolution in meltwater. Chloride itself is not a drinking water quality concern, but the associated sodium can cause health concerns. NHDES has been tracking increases in drinking water supplies in sodium, expected to be primarily from road salt impacts and is concerned about future increases. Increasing chloride conductivity is a concern, chloride and conductivity is a concern for aquatic species as well. So the proximity of this site to the Little River and associated wetlands and the discharge of groundwater from the site, especially during low flow, could impact long-term surface water quality. A monitoring point downstream on the Little River and other surface water measuring points has documented the increase in conductivity and chloride in the river during periods of low flow over four recent years of data collection. The proposed use will not cause a significant reduction in the long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or in the storage capacity. This is the condition number two. My assessment of that is that there will be a reduction in recharge to the site as estimated by pre and post-development drainage calculations. These, this change was estimated to be approximately a 10% decrease in the impervious areas. The next condition, the proposed use complies with all other applicable sections of the article. And I mentioned before that, you know, wanting to make sure that the, the site uses were as we would have expected. I was hoping to get some additional information on repairs and, and use of potential hazardous materials within the facility. Then the last one, that there was a hydrogeologic study done and they have complied with the requirements and done the additional work requested by my previous review.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dana. And I just want to make sure that the board is clear on the summary that Dana did and by, by, by the way she structured it. It'll be helpful to the board members as we, when we get to the point of discussing and eventually voting on a conditional use permit for this use in the aquifer protection district. You'll at least be able to pull out Dana's information on a per, per item basis of those four, of those four conditions that, that, that you're going to have to vote on. So keep this, keep this handy if you need to refer to it and all right. So Dana, you, you would still like some additional information. You pointed that out as you went through it. I, I'm sure that Carl was listening and, and hopefully he can, he can get back to you on it. He's shaking his head yes, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, uh, let's see. Before I go to Glenn Greenwood. I do have some department head comment sheets. There isn't a lot on them at this point, so maybe I can go through those quickly. And get those onto the record before I go to you, Glenn. And I'm not, I saw Chief Pellerin, Fire Chief Pellerin, he's on the call. There is not a comment sheet in here, but certainly if he wishes to make comment, he can he can raise his hand or, or speak up in some fashion. But we do have one from a police department, from the chief of police. And the comment is that And the comment is that I am still waiting for the town of Kingston's traffic engineer to provide me with his final report. And the town's, the town's reviewing traffic engineer is TF Moran, who was, who was the peer review consultant for the town, looking at the information that Mr. Purnaw, the traffic engineer for the applicant had provided. And Glenn, do you know the status of that at this point?
Um, actually, I, I know some of the status. One, one of my questions deals with the traffic impact report as a, as a result of the changes that were made with this, this new plan set. But at six tonight, as I was making sure that I could access email in case stuff came through. At 6:15, I got the final sign off from TF Moran. And that was as a result of a series of changes that Steve Purnaw had provided to him. My question was if those changes incorporated the recirculation of traffic in the site because of the elimination of the access road to 107. I haven't looked at the, the report because I just, it just came in tonight before the meeting started.
Okay, Carl is, is motioning his hand up and he's also shaking his head yes.
Yes, sir. Actually, Steve Purnaw is here also, and we just got that forwarded to us. And Steve, are you, are you on with us?
He was earlier. There he is.
Unmute yourself. Can Stephen, I, we can't hear you because you're muted. Oh, there you go. Uh, uh, can you do a, a very quick summary on that? It looks like a pretty good review, but can you summarize?
Certainly. Are you able to hear me? Okay.
You have to speak up.
Not very well.
Let me adjust the volume. Is that better?
Not really.
You have to really speak up. They won't hear you unless you do.
All right, well. The bottom line is we prepared addendum number one and submitted that in early December. And the purpose of addendum one was to address the closure or elimination of the driveway on Route 107. And then I presented that information to the board at the December meeting. So Glenn, that, that is old information, but you, you have it. We did receive a copy of that letter from TF Moran after 6:00 PM as well. And he basically signs off on it and says that his questions have been answered.
He, he doesn't, and my question, Steve, is the changes in December, I thought were that the access road was being closed to general public. And it didn't, I wasn't sure that that incorporated information for the, the recirculation within the parking lot, since there would be no traffic. But what you're telling me is that that revision did cover that activity.
Correct, Glenn.
Good. So I will be able to get the TF Moran study that came in this evening to Chief Briggs tomorrow.
Okay.
Sounds correct to me.
All right. So Glenn, you'll take care of getting that to, to Chief Briggs?
Well, and, and the email that accompanied that report, since I haven't seen the report, the email from, from Robert DeVall did say that other than a couple of suggestions he had for, and maybe issues for conditional approval, that he approved and found the traffic impact study to be complete and correct. So what, what Steve and Carl are saying is certainly what was reflected in the email to me as well.
Okay, all right. The next, did I miss, did I, did some, Carl, you didn't, did you have your hand up for?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, just in follow-up with Dana, we also have Tim Stone on the line and the takeaway points that I wrote down was we are going to get her the additional green snow pro data. We also are going to increase the recharge by 10%. That's very easy. We can have Dennis re-review that, but that, that's very simple. I just want to give you the takeaways on this. The percent impervious area, when you guys were talking, I did a calculation and the impervious area as reflected, reflection of the lined ponds only increases our impervious area by 1% overall. And actually, even if you assign all of that just to the, the, the big lot, it's still, we're, we're still totally within criteria. We're bumping to 43% and up to 60% is allowed. So that, we're going to provide that information as well. And also our drainage study, we can have that rechecked with Dennis, but our design point on that was at the entrance to 125 culvert. And we can provide those hydraulic calculations to show that. And also that stone wall slash dam diversion swell area. We can provide those in that more detailed information as well. It's very simple to do. And we have no, no problem doing that at all. We're going to confirm with you on the, any maintenance M and O and repairs in the building. We don't plan on having any substantial items like that and we will meet code, but we'll provide that information as well. And if, if Tim Stone, I know is on the line, if he, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to hear from him, he, he does want to confirm a couple of things that Dana said and just give you comfort that the remaining items that she has, we have no problem in delivering. But I don't know, Mr. Chair, you want to hear from Tim or not to say that?
Well, I, I think, I think as long as you're saying that and, and that, and that that is forthcoming, I think that's sufficient for now. But, but I will, I will say though, that if you are planning to make changes to address some of the concerns that Dana had with regard to things like recharge and so forth. Then I, I mean, that's a, that's an item that's going to be critical to, to, to a board member when they're voting on some of this conditional use permit criteria. And so you know, I mean.
Yeah, we don't, we don't see any design changes per se, but we would increase the available recharge. And that's always a good thing. We have plenty of room to do that. Everything else is really confirmatory. We don't have.
Right. All, all I'm trying to say is that if by some stroke of luck, we were getting to the point tonight of voting on a conditional use permit in the Aqua for Protection District. If, if there are things that you think, changes that you're planning on that are going to make your position better in respect to this. Then you, you, you might want us to hold off on that vote until you've made those changes. That's all I'm saying.
Right. That, that, that could be considered as well as, or just basically having condition that says those one, two, three, four, five, I think there were actually six items of confirmatory nature that we would actually, if the, the condition was that we shall meet that criteria that Dana sets forth, we would do that as well as, there's a, a few minor items that Dennis pointed out, some minor inverts. We would also incorporate those as a condition, but we have no problem doing that.
Okay.
Hey, Carl, Chairman. I would like at some point before we wrap this up, maybe not now, but have the opportunity to just kind of just clarify a couple details of things that were submitted in the hydrogeological board update to give the planning board a more thorough understanding of the findings.
If, if you can, if you can do it in a really concise way, because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get through some other items here, but if, if, if you can do that, Tim, that's, that's fine. Do that, do that now.
Okay, I'd like to do that. Thank you. Tim Stone with Stonehill Environmental. As Dan indicated, we in response to her comments on the hydrogeologic, original hydrogeologic investigation, we went back out to the site, installed an additional monitoring well, found an existing monitoring well from the eighties downgrade into the exist, existing septic system. We added additional surface water sampling point at a culvert at Route 125 and we collected quite a bit of additional and samples for analysis for vault organic compounds, PAHs, the more petroleum related compounds. But I, but I, we'd just like to clarify a couple of things. So in the surface water, we detected a small concentration of nitrates, about 1.5 milligrams per liter upstream, kind of three quarters of the way upstream of Little River towards Route 107. Downstream, we had not detected downstream with nitrates. So at least initial data, and again, streams are very dynamic. We didn't see any impact from nitrates from the site to the Little River. And I think we really need to think about that this, you can't look at this site with blinders in a vacuum. There is an entire watershed that is passing through this, through the, the property here. When it came to chloride, which is obviously the hot button issue here, the upstream sample that we collected contained 9.1 milligrams per liter chloride downstream by the Route 125 contained 36. I was kind of surprised by that difference. And I figured I wasn't comfortable with our upstream sampling location being right adjacent to the bank, whereas the downstream location was in the middle of the stream flow going through the culvert under 125. So we went back out yesterday and sampled where the water of the Little River actually enters the site at the culvert on Route 107. And the results came back nearly identical upstream and downstream. It was around, I think, 20, 27 upstream at Route 107. And then I think it was 31 downstream, something like that, virtually identical concentrations, which essentially say during our sampling yesterday, there was virtually no detectable impact from the site on the Little River water quality. So just to kind of put it in perspective. With regards to the wells down gradient of the existing septic system, indeed, we did detect xylanes and taluene. But I just need to mention the concentrations we detected it at. Taluene at the taluene was at four parts per billion. The drinking water standard for taluene is 1,000 parts per billion. And for xylanes, we detected xylanes at five parts per billion. And the standard is 10,000 parts per billion. So just to put it in perspective, we detected what would be considered trace concentrations. It does say that a septic system can impact groundwater quality, as will any septic system, whether or not it's a residential system or a commercial system. And that, the, the same goes for nitrates. We did detect some nitrates at a 3.8 milligrams per kilogram down gradient of that septic system. No surprise, it's a septic system. But indeed, with no treatment whatsoever, we are well below the 10 milligrams per liter standard. And, you know, we will be treating to a much lower concentration with the Aqua Point units. I've actually been overruled. I was proposing 23 or 24 milligrams per liter for the office building, an old warehouse treatment system. And the team has decided just to go with 12. I don't think it's necessary, but if we want that biggest safety factor, that doesn't have too much technical justification, we'll go ahead and do it. We also have water quality analysis from this, the non-transient community supply well on site from the past two years, which we presented to Dana and to the planning board. And there is non-detection of any contaminants whatsoever from volatile organics to PFAS to chloride to coliform. So just to try to put it in perspective, this site has, with the data that we have in hand, has virtually no impact on groundwater and to a degree, at least right now, surface water with probably the exception of the chloride contamination, which any site that's been approved into town of Kingston is impacting groundwater with chloride. So I'm just trying to ask the board to have an open mind when we look at this. You can't look at a site and with blinders, chloride is a problem statewide. We all agree with it. And we're proposing to use the best management practices available to reduce the impacts from the site. And then just finally, a big thank you to, to Dana for turning her comments around so quickly. And, and as Carl has indicated, I believe we can address, you know, all of her comments to the satisfaction of of Dana and the planning board. So thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate the additional information and clarification. I'm sure this isn't the last time that we'll be talking about this, so you're, you're, you're on standby. All right. Uh, the, let me finish going through the rest of the department comments that we have Conservation Commission. This is from Acting Vice Chair, Margie Bean. And it's dated today. And the statement is it wasn't until January 13th or 14th that the Kingston Conservation Commission saw the plans for 266 Route 125 on the town website. Due to this, the KCC was unable to meet and provide comments on the plans in time for the planning board meeting scheduled for January 19th. We will send comments at our next, after our next meeting on February 4th. The building department, building inspector has a comment just noting that on sheet number 15, there's a new owner on a piece of property. It's currently labeled as Hazel Hanson Heirs. And it's now been sold, that property's been sold off and a new seven lot subdivision has been created. So there, there, there are new owners over in that area. Just, just you know, I mean, butters are listed usually as now or formerly, and I'm sure when you did the plans, that's who owned it. But he was just pointing out that there are new owners there. And health inspector has no comments. Okay. Let's see, we're at eight o'clock. Glenn, how about if we do your, review your comments now? I, I mean, most, most, well, unless you'd rather take a short break and come back and we'll do yours. How's that?
Whatever the board chair would like to do.
All right. I need to stretch my legs. Let's, let's do a quick five-minute break, come back at 8:05. And we'll go through Glenn's comments and then get into, get into some more board discussion. Okay. See you all shortly.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear Stephen Purnar now?
Oh, that's much better.
I have called in on my phone. Looks like my microphone died on the camera. So I will just sit quiet unless there's a question for me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see, it looks as though we've got. Most of our board members back. Think, well, maybe not. We'll give it, we'll give it another minute. Not seeing Peter's back. I'm waiting for Lynn. Peter, Chris. Robin. Other Peter. Okay. Okay, well, while we're waiting for Lynn, Glenn, maybe you can start walking us through your comments. I I know that a lot of. A lot of the comments, at least early on were addressed, but you've still got some outstanding items. And then you've got some. Some additional comments as we as we move forward here with 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 conditional use permits and such. So. Why don't we? Why don't we start with you and have have you go through that for us?
Perfect. Yeah, the the first set of my comments, they're just the holdovers that are, I really keep them there because Carl's aware of what needs to be done. There are some things like. Agsment language and crosses between subdivided parcels. Those are things that need to get accomplished. But they are fairly administrative. Of the 32 comments I started out with, we're down to 10 of which about five of them are really just. Just. Administrative. I did want to. I did want to comment on the easement one and on the fact that. Before we finish up, the board needs to make sure to remember to determine just what substantial improvement will be for this project. Because that will set the timeframes for vesting it in case there it becomes a long drawn out development. So I didn't want the board to forget that. More importantly, are the things I have listed under additional comments. So if I could just read those, I know it's tacky. I know the board members have already read it. But I'll just read it now here quickly.
Yeah, sure.
The planning board needs to consider all three conditional use permits. The unconditional use permit from my perspective now deals only with the well that is being eliminated, the construction of the building. The applicant has been working with NHDS to secure the dredging bill permit required. And I think they've already, it actually already got that dredging field permit. And it made the the outstanding conditions on that maybe that they're they're working the the financial transaction. To secure the conservation easement protections that are going on the properties in South Kingston. So from my perspective, and I indicated this to the design team during the TRC meeting that we had. Two a week or so or two weeks ago, I forget. That I still consider that because there is a well and that's being filled. And so work is not only being done in the buffer, but also in. Primary well itself by filling the extra be a condition use permit still granted by the planning board. My comment that would be that I I consider that the condition use permit from the town should offer the permit, the conservation. Even land of the conservation easement purchase as reasons for the potential granting of permanent. So. Wanted to just say that on the record. The condition use permit for the aquifer protection district realized heavily upon the findings of hydrogeologic review. Being completed by Truslow. And you've heard a lot about that already. So my comment there was that. From my perspective, it isn't something that I'm really going to be able to guide the board on. It's something that the board needs to take the testimony from from Dana and us. The CUP for the Shoreland Protection District is much closer, a much closer call for me. The applicant has reduced the footprint of the building to pull away from the Little River. In addition, the access road to Route 107. Has been completely eliminated, as has been noted earlier tonight, thereby removing all the potential this access had for negatively impacting the river resource. These are two significant responses that the applicant is taking to address legitimate concerns raised by town staff and abutters. The aspects remaining for the planning board to consider regarding the shoreline protection on districts CUP, in my opinion, are the following. Has the applicant provided enough onsite stormwater management to ensure that the surface water resource will not be detrimentally impacted if the project is constructed? And is the planning board comfortable with the applicant's intended use of previous pavement in several areas on the plan? First concern, the first concern I leave to both the town engineer and the consulting hydrogeologists to provide comment upon. Second issue, previous pavement is a planning board decision. Historically, the board is not favored such an approach due to potential water resource degradation. I find previous pavement and appropriate stormwater management tool provided proper long range maintenance is guaranteed. If not properly maintained, previous pavement does not treat stormwater management in the way that it is intended. Planning board must discuss this issue because its impact, because it impacts the overall stormwater management plan for the application and could re could require additional. Work by the applicant. The removal of the removal of the access road to New Hampshire Route 107 impacts the overall traffic pattern on the site. And here's, here's the question that was just answered 20 minutes ago. I have not seen a revised traffic report that discusses these change. Changes and if any impact is generated for the remaining proposed access points. And as Steve pointed out earlier, the the end of did do that and that agenda has been. Reviewed by our consulting traffic engine. And then in order to address the concern raised by abutters to the site, the applicant should consider adding a note to the plan expressly confirming. Site will not be used for drone delivery activity, because that's something that's an issue that's been mentioned a couple of times. It might serve well to get that addressed at on. And those were my comments for the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. All right. Are there questions at this point from the board? Things that you think you still don't have enough information on, things you have questions about? Something you're not quite sure about? Richard Wilson?
One question for Dana is it sounds like they were taking the. Existing building and correcting a lot of problems that you had seen, like the old septic system, floor drains. That type of stuff that they bettered that situation. Is that correct?
Yeah, there there were several things that the the septic system was going to be replaced anyway, but when it is removed. It's going to get more than just a standard abandonment. The soil is actually going to be tested. And analyzed and made sure that there are no remaining contaminants there before the the reuse. The floor drain issue that came up because of site use information that was recently provided and. You know, since that's supposedly routed to the septic system and the septic system is being decommissioned, then. It makes sense to get rid of those floor drains. So they've agreed to that. And then the only other remaining. Question that was also addressed by Dubay was the roof drains. There are roof drains that are routed to to. Pipes that discharge close to the river. It looks from the stormwater calculations that one of them is not going to be utilized at all for any future drainage. So that that should be eliminated. And then the other one is going to receive drainage from. From this subsurface detention area. So that's going to be an overflow point. They're going to improve the. The discharge point so that it, you know, it isn't eroding. Right now there's erosion there, a lot of sedimentation. That will be improved so that it has, you know, less impact than the current version.
And one other thing. You're breaking this into four lots and the town is going to put some stormwater management. Efforts on your control or in your control. Is that going to be every lot is going to have to take care of their own thing? Or is there going to be one mass maintenance people that are going to turn in? Records for the whole site?
Um, I did not dig in.
That's probably more of a question for Carl, but.
Yeah, yeah, I did not dig into the 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 operation and maintenance plan. So I really can't answer that.
I just wonder if one person's going to be responsible for the maintenance of all the acreage or if it's going to be. Four different groups that we're going to have to deal with.
Carl? It it'll be a composite package of reports. So that there would be actually a hybrid where. There would be four, four, because every, every site is a little bit different. But that they would, as far as the town's concerned, this is a site, a package, a holistic package. And those reporting packages, instead of having to deal with four separate ones, would be aggregated into one master report. On whatever Dana would require us to do and the state actually for that reporting and monitoring. So you don't have to chase down four. It'll be all under one cover.
And then my last thing is I want to put in a plug. For the town that is going for an enforcement manager this year. That this is the type of situation that we need an enforcement agent. To follow through with the MS4 issues, the stormwater issues, the sound issues, the lighting issues. And to follow up on those reports and that things go in like they say they will go in if this is approved. So please vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Richard, for the PSA. That's good. I'm sure Ellie appreciates that, too. When I see your chairman is with us, Mr. Coombs, that's good. Okay. All right. Other questions on the board at this moment? Robin?
I have a question for Dennis and potentially for Dana. So specific to Dennis's comment about the town not typically. I guess approving porous pavement in the volume that's proposed. I. I'm having a hard time locating where the the town's. Language or regulations around that would be. The state obviously has some pretty comprehensive language. So it would, I guess, just be helpful for Dennis to clarify that.
Dennis?
Um, so I I think that in in my experience with the town, I I don't know of any site plan that has allowed forest pavement. I think the concern is with. Any. Fluids leaking from vehicles parked. On on pavement. I think the town has has basically frowned against uses use of forest pavement in order to prevent. Any fluids from leaking from vehicles that would go directly into the aquifer. If if there are fluids that are leaking from a parked parked car, it should be captured. In runoff to a catch basin where there could be hoods on the catch basin that would would be able to capture any of the. Any contaminants before it gets into the aquifer. So I think that that's the philosophy that the town has. I I just can't remember if if the town has allowed it in the past, and I don't, I don't know if it has. But that's something that maybe one of the other board members could chime in on on with. But. I I think in in this case, they're using porous pavement in order to comply with. Their impervious surface requirements. And and if 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 the board does not allow porous pavement. Then then they don't comply with the impervious surface calculations for each for the individual lots. So I think it's an important issue that the board needs to. Give the applicants a direction as to whether they're allowed to use porous pavement. And if they are, then perhaps they're going to be using porous porous pavement on. A lot more of the paved area in order to. Address the concerns that have been raised tonight about increasing the infiltration into surface into the aquifer. So. I just think that that's my comments for now, I guess, on that. And maybe somebody else can. And add some more as far as that goes.
Peter Coffin?
Yeah, I think if you won't find anything if you look for the word porous pavement, you will find regulations that require. That parking areas and vehicles be parked on impervious services, which obviously would rule out porous pavement. And I know that's issues come up a number of times on car dealerships because they have quite a a large amount of parking area on there. There are lots. Um, the the other thing is that I had a question about. Glenn Greenwood referred to this before, the the management of porous pavement. And if it's porous. It then says the the contaminants can go through as just as water can they get. Unless there's some something special about porous pavement that that allows water to go through, but not the larger molecules of hydrocarbons. But how would you, Glenn, manage porous pavement to preclude contamination? Can I have a minute from going through?
Sorry, I had to unmute. It's my understanding that there are. That there is the ability when installing porous pavement to actually do. Treatment facilities beneath the surface. That allows for some management of contamination. I don't think that it is. Done with all types of porous pavement, but I believe I've seen details. Where there are ports payments that do include such such sort of remediation activity below the surface. That would be something that I mean, that's honestly a better question for the design team, but that's that's my take on it. My comment was. That even beyond that issue, if there isn't a good. good process for maintaining it, then it ceases to act the way it's supposed to act and it doesn't stay porous. And so I would expect that on a, on a facility like this, it would be the need to either bond or have some sort of security or, or process or ensuring that long-term maintenance was, was occurring so that it maintained its porosity. That my comment was not directed towards any containment, any contamination that might naturally occur because of the porosity of pavement.
Carl? Okay, so I'd just like to point out a couple of things just to get us perspective. Number one is we're not, we're not relying on the square footage of porous pavement to offset credits for impervious, to make any impervious in compliance. So if you look at all the impervious data on all the plans, no matter what subsection of the, any of the performance criteria there are, we're not relying on that. As a matter of fact, we pre-designed a lot of this stuff so that if the board or, you know, the reviewing engineer decided, do they want porous pavement and they want, not want porous pavement? It doesn't matter to us. We can, we can do that either way. But based on our experience with DES on larger sites and, and many towns, they actually want us to put porous pavement in. And it, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a right place to do it and the right time to do it and a wrong time. And we're doing it at the right locations. So the only places we're putting porous pavement is for the office building itself, that little parking lot. And we did it because we thought it was the right thing to do. And also in the employee parking area in back of the existing warehouse where we had our sidewalk, you can see all the pavement there. We wanted to turn that, that's going to be a, just a solely an employee area for parking. So, and then we have two very small other areas, but very small, again, just employee parking only. And, and we know that's the right thing to do because we're doing a lot of AOT permitting. And they love this stuff and it works great. And I know that there have been some problems or issues over 20 years of trying to get this stuff to work. We're doing it all over the place. Certainly on office or employee parking areas, we're doing it everywhere. And it works really, really well. Now, if this board, and it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing, but it's a dichotomy in a way. If this board doesn't want to do it, we won't do it. We don't need to take that credit. We will, we will have to provide the recharge for that differential somewhere else, but there's room for that. I know that when we do these AOT permits and you have a little office building, a little employee area, they'll give us a big thumbs up if we do the porous pavement. Same thing with the employee areas in back of the warehouse so close to the river. They actually say, geez, why can't you do porous pavement here? The soils are great for that. It's a great practice. It's done well. It's under a very strict MNO maintenance operations plan. So it's up to the board. I mean, we're doing it because we think it's right. And there's a, just because Kingston hasn't done it, that's fine. We respect that. We know what's, what the state would like us to see, to do. But if you don't want it, we won't do it. And it doesn't affect our calculations or, or anything. We'll, if we do remove the porous pavement for those two small areas, we'll have to reinsert recharge somewhere else. And I have no problem doing that. We have so much extra capacity here with these changes now. It's, it's, it's easy. I just don't want to hold up an approval with the board trying to decide whether or not they should allow a good, good practice. If you don't want it, we won't put it in. And that's basically it.
Carl, can I just? I'm just thinking, I'd like to, I'd like to see the, the MNO and, and stuff like that and have, actually have Dennis and maybe Dana see it to see whether it's, it really is a positive thing or is, you know, and what kind of maintenance is required? What gets through in terms of contaminants? And, and perhaps heavy tractor trailer trucks, you know, might not be appropriate for it because they tend to compress things. Whereas obviously employee parking may be a great place for it. So I, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to go along with it, but I'd like to have the professionals who deal with this take a look at, at what the maintenance plan is. And same thing with the, your responses to Dana, to Dana, you know, I'm sure she's happy with it. I'd like to see that incorporated into the plan. You know, the changes you're going to make. I know you said you didn't need to make design changes in order to add 10% more infiltration. So it would be interesting to see how that was accomplished. So that, that's just before we vote on the CUPs. But, but like not to have to give a waiver for the parking, you know, things.
And to, to point, Mr. Coffin, I, I totally respect that and agree. And I, I just, I would just need to hear from Dennis and Dana. If their personal preference is not to do it, we won't do it. I, I don't want to, I don't want to go around in circles and, and try to like, I don't want to, I, I just want to make Dennis and Dana comfortable. And if they really don't want to have that in there, we won't, we won't put it, we'll remove it and replace it with something else. It's not a problem. I just need to know, I'd like to know tonight so we don't go around in circles on this. I have no, no problem either.
Carl, can I have a comment?
Let's go. Mr. Stone?
I just wanted to add a comment. The, from what I've seen, the vast majority of studies of porous pavement have shown that porous pavement actually reduces all sorts of contaminants that would otherwise go off in runoff and, and cause problems in other areas. And usually most incidental releases from vehicles, you know, dripping from oil pans or whatever it is have very little impact that will typically biodegrade before getting more than maybe a few feet below the pavement. So for the most part, the general research is very accepting of porous pavement in, in kind of low intensity use lots, parking lots, employee parking lots, your target parking lot, things like that. I just wanted to pass that on.
Okay, thank you. Richard Wilson?
That is why I asked about the stormwater management, because that would come under the reports they would have to do. Just to remind everybody that the Lowe's in Greenland has a very large parking lot with this, and that was built in a wetland area.
Okay. Dennis?
So I, I think it's, it's really up to the board what they, what they decide. But I just wanted to comment that in the operation and, and maintenance report that they have, that Kyle has submitted, it, it does refer to maintenance of the porous pavement. But it does, it refers to the requirements dictated by UNH. So perhaps Kyle could probably expand on that and, 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 and spell out specifically what needs to be done, the sweeping and vacuuming or whatever needs to be done in the O and M instead of just referring to the requirements from UNH. So if you could do that, Kyle, it might be helpful to, if, if, if the town does allow it, that, that whoever is doing the maintenance can make sure that they know specifically what needs to be done for this project to make sure that they, they, it's maintained properly.
Robin?
Yeah, so just as a, a follow-up, because I, I feel like I may have inadvertently indicated that I was looking for something I wasn't. So I, I really just wanted to clarify if Dennis's comments were a matter of regulation of precedent or preference. And that was sort of why I had asked the question.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Robin. I, it's, it, I think as you've sort of figured out now through this discussion, it's, it's, it's more a question of past practice by the board. And, and there were two issues. One is that, one is that, you know, if you've got a porous surface, you've got the possibility, depending on the types of discharge that might fall on it, how much would go through to the underlying soils? That's one issue. And then if you don't maintain it properly, then you lose its, that its porous qualities. And so you lose the benefit of having it. So you know, you've got those two things playing off, off one another. And I think that in previous applications that, that has, that the board has seen of this, there, there, there's been enough discomfort about either one or both of those two items that, that the, the projects went forward with, without, without pervious pavement.
Mr. Chair? In, in the MNO program, it refers to the UNH guidelines, and those are actually included at the end of the O and M program, actually integrated already in there. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
I just, I just shared my screen and just showed you a snapshot of, of that. It's, it's all in there. And UNH is considered a, actually not even just a regional, but a national leader in that. And they're on top of things. And what the DES is basically, their guidance is, is to go to the UNH program because they keep refining all of these things and, and putting in, you know, better O and M practices and design details. And we're always, for instance, we do a lot of this with Continental paving. Continental, they're, they're experts at this stuff. They really, they really do it well. And there's education programs on O and M, but that is included, it was included, absolutely included in the O and M documentation that we received, that we submitted.
Great, thank you. Okay. Can we get a sense from the board about, about feelings on pervious pavement and whether or not, whether or not you're comfortable with it going forward as proposed in the?
Would you like that as a motion?
Well, it would be, it certainly would be much clearer if it was as a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the pervious pavement as designed.
I'll second it.
All right, so a motion by Richard Wilson, second by Peter Baiki, to allow for pervious pavement as proposed in the most recent plan set. Is there a date on that plan set?
And it's.
January 7.
January 7?
January 7th, and also that same O and M information typically is only 75% reduction in the amount of salt use for porous pavement. That's another reason why we did it.
Okay. And, and as you've stated, Carl, the, the pervious pavement is in the front part of the new building and it's part of the redo of the pavement on one of the, on the existing building. Is that right?
It's the, in the front part of the reconfigured employee parking lot for, for, for the office building. So it's an office parking lot. And for the employee area rebuilt behind the warehouse, so the employee parking area there's.
Okay, so to be clear, it's not where the trailer trucks would be?
No, it's not. You're absolutely right. And one of the board members correctly pointed that out. It gets too complicated. You can do porous pavement in trucking areas, but you end up with maybe a rigid system and it just gets very unwieldy. But you are correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there questions on that motion or any further discussion about it?
Just wanted to say that, that the way it's presented includes the operational management plan. That's correct, is it?
Yes, correct.
That would be, that's included, already included in the motion. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm going to call the roll then. And this is motion to allow pervious pavement as proposed on the most recent set of plans for this project dated January 7, 2021. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes. So that's unanimous on that. Okay. Other items that the board wants to get into at this moment? Because if, if you don't, I have about, I mean, I, I'm going to try to do it in between 10 and 15 minutes if I can, if I can rip through these quickly.
Can I just, Glenn, can I just ask one question?
Peter?
It seems like tonight, again, that we've talked a lot about this stormwater runoff issue where Dana talked about some COVID-19 125. And I've heard the designer has designed less, the less amount of water flowing that currently flows. So then we talked about not enough water in the stream. Then we talked about too much water flowing. So my question is, has Dennis and Dana given the applicant a number they're looking for for stormwater runoff? But we are still guessing numbers here. It seems like we don't have exactly what they're asking for. And I don't think we've talked about that. Does the applicant have that number, that magic number?
Well, I'm not sure it's a magic number.
Well, I, I think, I think every time the applicant comes back, he, he does what the board wants him to do. And then it's changed again. So I'm just kind of curious if they have what they're looking for. And the app, maybe the applicant can answer that question. Have they told him directly what they're looking for for a number?
All right, I, I'm going to let Carl and Dennis and Dana answer that because.
Thank you.
Because I, I think if I tried to, I would screw it up and I'm not qualified to do that, so.
I'd just like to, that, that's an excellent question. And I'd just like to point out that it's, it's been a, a really, really good process of the site. I see the scientists go back and forth with their suggestions and input and incorporation. And also the engineers at our, our office and Dennis. And then the interaction between the engineers and scientists. So it's, it's, it's always invigorating to see that discussion and actually go back and forth and see that. And in this case, there are state standards we have to abide by, but we totally recognize and totally appreciate and respect that the town of Kingston also has standards that are actually on a qualitative basis, even more at a higher threshold. And the scientists and the engineers, we've learned that we have to recognize that, respect that. And Mr. Quintel and Dana have, have certainly infused that into us. So I'd like to point that out. And so the, the quick answer on the quantitative, how do we go from qualitative to quantitative? Is, is sometimes not an exact science. And there's so many different permutations you can run a calculation on. We've, I can tell you, everybody on this Zoom hearing, that we've done everything we can do to, to have a good, positive working relationship and feedback on all the what ifs and all the things that are suggested. And, and sometimes that is a moving target because we're dealing with qualitative items. And if you change one thing, it changes something else. So, you know, the scientists reviewing and the engineering reviewing have a very difficult job. I can tell you, we've been, we've, we've tried to respond to them in kind and very quickly. So at the end, I don't want to put words in the engineer or scientist's mouth at all. There's a high degree of professional respect on that. But I can tell you that if we're working with, say, two different languages, we're looking, we're working with French and German, and Dana is, is looking at the, the calculations a different way than hydrocat numbers might be presenting themselves. And then Dennis is looking at it a different way. If Dana is looking for 10% more on something, I think I know what that something is. And I know we can actually, between, between the languages that we're working within and the calculations and the modeling and all the levels of precision, I know we can find that 10% and, and reintegrate that into the site. I, I don't have any problem with that and I, and I'm confident we can do that without any, you know, big changes of, of any sort. And so I'd just like to point that out. And, but if, if Dana or Dennis do have an exact number of something they would like to have us do, we will just do it because the worst case is 10% of, of something that we have on this site to, to deal with this and add more recharge. We have no problem doing that because now we've we've consolidated those variables. So that if we have to do ten percent of any number that we have on on six hundred pages of calculations on recharge, I know we can make that happen. So whatever Dennis Dennis and Dana comfort level is to increase something by ten percent on that, we have no problem with. That's why I I don't really care how they how they define what that ten percent is. Because ten percent of the numbers that we have for volumetric recharge is 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 doable.
Dana or Dennis, or both, do you have a response for this?
Sure, so I'll just say that, yeah, we definitely, there are different criteria for, you know, the alteration of terrain recharge versus what we feel is the appropriate amount of recharge for this aquifer protection area. So so I appreciate that Carl will work to increase that recharge number. In terms of the the discharge to the stream, I think the the only remaining question is is the capacity of the dam and the the.
Culvert?
Culvert, thank you. So, you know, it sounds like Carl can also provide that information. So that would be helpful to to see.
Dennis, did you have anything on this further?
Yes, I think, you know, I think Kyle's done a tremendous job as far as the stormwater calculations onsite. I I certainly agree with the methodology and the modeling that's been done and comment him on all the impervious surface that's that's on this project. The the biggest thing about the the drainage calculations, first of all, is the rate of runoff. And and he's mitigated the rate of runoff. And since he's mitigated the rate of runoff, it's my opinion that I don't believe that's going to be an impact to the culvert that goes underneath one twenty-five because it's going to be the same rate as as predevelopment. So it's not going to increase the rate that goes up into the culvert and higher. So it should be the same as predevelopment. And I believe that that's that's what he's designed for. As far as the downstream dam, the same same principle. It's 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 not going to add a slug of water that's going to increase the elevation of of the the rate of runoff. It just means that the water is going to run a lot longer. In in other words, if it's if it's going to run for for two days after a storm at a certain rate after the development, it might run for three or four days after after a storm. Because he's detaining it onsite and then allowing it to slowly be released through these detention basins. So to answer the question about the concern about the dam and the culvert that that Dana has brought up, I I don't think the rate, I think the rate of runoff is 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 designed to to handle it. My concern was with the volume of runoff was with with that extra runoff during storms greater than the two-year storm event. There was this extra volume of runoff, which is a considerable number of gallons of of water that I thought was 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 certainly significant. And and Kyle did respond with a memo to me and and address that. He did make a copy for the board to review. And his opinion is that there there would not be an impact to any residential home, anybody's yard or any structures that go underneath the roads as far as the volume, extra volume on a on a large storm event that would occur. Aside from that, if there is extra runoff that's going off the site during a storm event like that, my question is, since since that much water is going off the site, it it it's not going into the ground or recharging. And that's why my comments at that point in time would be transferred to Dana and and what her opinion is of of the groundwater recharge in the long run of whether these large storm events would impact the aquifer. So I guess with that, that's 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 in something that she can answer more than I can. And so that's why we've been just talking about it back and forth. And and she can answer that more than I can. So I I hope that helps answer Peter's concern, questions about stormwater that we've been going back and forth on and and trying to get a any design change that Kyle can 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 help and and mitigate these concerns that that I've just brought up.
And so to to sort of wrap up Peter's question that comes to you, Carl, are you are you getting what you need from from our folks to to do what you need to do?
Yes, actually. Yes, and I actually, when when they were talking, I I was looking at that complex at one twenty-five where the wetland and there's a somewhat of a rock dam. And I'd just like to point out that we've looked at that extensively. And it's it's the the Little River has a side feed on that 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 comes out into a pond area that ponds up into what you would call a dam. And there's a full, there's a full throughway for water that goes right through there, right under one twenty-five. And as a matter of fact, there's two ways for the water to go on that. And then the dam itself is not a dam of the river. It's actually a a downstream pondish area that is tangential to the main flow of the river. And that back that backfills. So when you drive by or look at it, it actually looks like a dam configuration, but it's not. It's actually the Little River and it has its flow path. And then there's a bunch of rocks out there. And then there's a secondary lower pond area that backfeeds off of the Little River. So it's not a dam in the sense that you have a dam and you're trying to manage the water through the dam or over it or under it. It's actually just a a a secondary ponded area that's supplemental to the flow that backfeeds. And it's actually very pretty over there. And we're obviously, we're not impacting any of that, we're not touching it. And our drainage analysis does indeed, as Dennis pointed out, you know, model that correctly. So I hope that helps. But I I can even point out on the plans if you want to see them. But it's a, it's a pretty little area and it's not acting as a dam because we have two other locations where the water actually flows through and backfeeds to the bottom level.
Thank you, Carl. Okay. All right, I'm going to take, like I said, I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can. We've received a number of written pieces of correspondence through the website and and email and and other forums that have come in since the last hearing on this. Obviously, there's there's way too much to read everything, but I at least want to put onto the record the individuals who who did choose to put information down on paper. And I can, I can just highlight any concerns that they might have had. And if they wished, as I said earlier, if they wish to speak later during public comment, they can, they can do so. And while I'm doing that, the board should be thinking about, and Glenn, you should be thinking about how to guide us in perhaps dealing with at least some of the conditional use permit requests that we have in front of us. Okay. All right, I I put these in chronological order. First one is from Paul La Liberty of Twenty-three Castle Court in Kingston dated December eighteenth. And he was reiterating the the proposal that he was suggesting for increased sound barrier on the on the Route one oh seven side of the of the project. And so there's that one. December nineteenth from Sandra Maida of Ten Concanon Road, concerned about environmental impacts. And specifically of the Little River, which is a tributary to the Exeter River and part of the Great Bay Biscotabo River watershed in the New Hampshire seacoast region, concerned about disruptions to wildlife as well as increasing traffic, air and noise pollution. December twenty-third, a letter from Nadine Vincent of Five Nason Lane in Kingston, asking if there's anything we can do to stop this from coming to town. And also concerned about traffic and concerned about impact on the aquifer and the water source. December twenty-eighth, a letter from Christopher and Sarah Roland of Seventeen Elkins Road in Kingston, concerns about increase in traffic, tractor trailers, creating a dangerous traffic situation potentially on Route one twenty-five. And sort of a final statement here saying that the Walmart distribution center in Raymond has an access lane and is right next to Route one oh one. This this placement makes sense on one twenty-five, it does not. On January five, we received a letter from Susan Barry Driggs of Twenty-one Castle Court with several issues raised, urging the board to seriously consider it issues when they deal with the conditional use permits and pointing out issues again with traffic, location on Route one twenty-five and noise created by the development. January third, a letter from.
Glenn.
Hello?
I'm I'm sorry to interrupt you. When you're, when you read the addresses, could you just go a little slower? Ellen's trying to capture them.
Oh, sure. Do you want me to go back to any of them?
I I don't believe so because we can do that with the recording, I think, but.
All right, I'll 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 do those a little slower.
Thank you.
All right, on January third, a letter from Roger and Carol Branshaw or Branshod, Nineteen Monarch Way in Kingston. Let's see, thanking the applicant and the board for the elimination of the of the entrance under one oh seven. Still concerned, however, about noise and air pollution from the project. On January five, from Representative Josh Yocella, and I don't have an address, but I believe he lives in Fremont. And this was in response to question from a constituent asking him some questions about this project. And he wrote back to her indicating that he was in strong support of the project and would like to voice that support to the board. So that's from Representative Yocella. Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. On January five as well, we received another letter from Richard and Yvonne Tracy of Seventeen Monarch Way. Let's see. Supporting the concept that Mr. La Liberty raised with regard to a larger or stronger or more substantial sound barrier on the Route one oh seven side of the of the project. On January sixth, from again, from Sandra Maida, Concanon Road, I believe it was ten, if I, it doesn't say on this letter, but I believe that's what it was, in Kingston, reiterating concerns about traffic, air and noise pollution, environmental impact on wetlands, wildlife, endangered species, watersheds. And, okay. She's also referring and and sort of sort of referring to the Rocking and Planning Commission's input to the board with regard to potential regional impact. On January eight, a letter from Blair and Kathy Porter, Twenty-eight Pillsbury pasture road. They would like to convey their support for the new distribution center. In their opinion, it would help to broaden the tax base and increase economic activity in Kingston. On January eight, again, this one from Heidi and Michael Cottone at Twenty-nine Castle Court, expressing concerns with the proposed exit onto Route one oh seven, which, as we know now, is is no longer there. And asking, asking the, asking the board to reconsider the proposal for the warehouse and whether, you know, indicating that, you know, maybe it's not the right place for it, atmosphere in town, so forth and so on. Issues with wildlife. Okay. So you 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 get the sense that a lot of these are are, you know, have a very similar theme to them. But I want to make sure that we capture the the sort of the essence of it and who is who is communicating to us. This is a very long letter from Mr. Michael Norton, and I believe he's actually on the call. And I'm not, please do not unmute yourself because this is not the public comment period. But your letter does not have an address, although I believe it's Little River Road. Issues with potential traffic impact. He's concerned that the applicant has refused to tell the board in the town of Kingston who the ultimate tenant will be. Goes into detail about quoting from the traffic impacts, traffic impact study regarding tractor trailer trips. And came up to, came up with actually some of his own conclusions with regards to numbers and so that's all in here. During the public comment period, I'm sure that if he wishes to speak directly to it, he can. On January fourteenth, a letter from Karenada Benjamin, Twenty-four Second Street, Kingston, wants to register, quote, "strong opposition" and citing heavy traffic, cutting down trees, pollution of potential pollution of groundwater and potential impact to wildlife and Kingston's way way of life. Okay. On January fourteenth, this one is from Marie Brett, and there is no address, I'm sorry. So, I mean, technically, I shouldn't even go any further with it because we don't, we we don't have that for the record. But suffice it to say that it's a letter in opposition to the project. It looks as though this is another one from Sandra Maida with, and this is from January fourteen, similar to some of the other one, the other one that she had submitted. Let's see. This one dated January fifteenth from Mark Hammond and David Bueller of Thirty-nine Great Pond Road, Kingston, strongly objecting to the proposal, citing the large clear cut that would be taking place and the potential potential, yeah, citing the runoff and the and the issue of inability, the ability of the the ground for infiltration to the aquifer. A lot of this, we have talked about a lot of that, but but that is a concern of theirs. Trucks, truck traffic, dripping of potential volatiles and chemicals and and finding their way to the water. Noise pollution, increased truck traffic, increased air pollution, impact to wetlands and wildlife and permanent, potentially permanent, impact to the aquifer. On January sixteenth, from. On January 16th from. And again, there's no address on this, but it's Carolyn and Roy Bergquist, B E R G K U I S T. Similar concerns. Opposition to the project. January 19. From Alan and Eileen Gothier. 15 Monarch Way. Concerned about. Air pollution. Noise. Truck traffic. Loading and unloading of trucks during day and night. Concerned about use of drones and we've already. We've already gone through that one. There are no drones being proposed and we've asked the applicant to state that specifically on the plans. And additional truck traffic, additional traffic in general on 107 and 125. Okay. All right, how did I do? Well, not too, too bad. So that is all the written correspondence that, that we've received. And as I said, when we get to the open public comment period. Folks can certainly. Can speak more to their, to their letters and to their, to their, to their concerns at that time. Okay, so the board's had plenty of time to think about the. Conditional use permits and Glenn, any, any guidance for us on how, how you think we should proceed from here?
Well, like my, my notes said, I, I prefer you take care of the wetlands one first.
Okay. All right, so let me see if I can, let me see if I can preface this and. If it would help the board. Right now, we're looking at three conditional use permits, one for the use within the Aquifer Protection District, one for. Impact for work being, well, for impact on shoreline, the Shoreline Protection District. And the Wetlands Conservation District. And the only, the only impact to wetlands as Glenn and the applicant have stated. Is the wetland area that is being filled in order, and I believe it's where the building is going. Is that right, Carl?
Correct.
Yeah. And. And the applicant has worked out with the state of New Hampshire and with the town of Kingston. A mitigation area. For that wetland. So. So it's impacting the wetland on site, but the state law allows for mitigation by. Identifying or creating or setting aside other wetlands. Actually, if you go by the state. Rules, I believe that, that DES would allow mitigation within the watershed or other areas. And in this case. The applicant and the town have been able to. Keep that, that mitigation site in the town of Kingston. So I would view that as a positive. But there are no other wetlands being impacted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So. So with regard to a conditional use permit for the Wetlands Conservation District, our ordinance says. That conditional use permits are required for any work proposed within the Wetlands Conservation District. Or designated buffer unless it meets provisions of blah, blah, blah. In granting a conditional use permit, the planning board shall seek the opinion of the Conservation Commission and may impose conditions. To the extent the board concludes such conditions are necessary to minimize any adverse. Effect on the proposed project of the wetlands and/or the designated wetland buffer. The conditional use permit may be granted by the planning board. For construction in areas designated as wetlands, as well as in areas designated as buffer areas to wetlands, provided that all of the following conditions are found to exist. And there are three of them. One, that the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land, not within the Wetlands Conservation District. Two, design and construction of maintenance methods will be such as to minimize detrimental impact upon the wetland. And will include restoration of the site as nearly as possible to its original grading condition. And three. No alternate route which does not cross a wetland or has less detrimental impact on the wetland is feasible. So we need to. Deal with each of those three and vote on them and. A positive vote on all three is required in order for that conditional use permit to be granted. Robin?
So I know we didn't have comments from conservation for this evening, but it's my understanding that the. Impact to the wetland buffer has not changed since they last gave comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
At the end, the, there's no impact to the wetland buffer, the, 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 well, there, well, there is the, that wetland. In, in the area that the building is going had the, it was the wetland and its associated buffer area, and that is being eliminated and replaced with a mitigation. Wetland in another area of town. Does the board feel they have enough information to deal with this? Particular conditional use permit request?
Glenn, I didn't look up those RSAs that cited in that ordinance, but looking at the way the ordinance is worded and you just read. I don't see where. There's a place where we can use the mitigation. I understand that that's. That's what validates this is that we're using a mitigation offset. I don't see that as an option in our, in those three criteria. It's, there's supposed to be restoration minimum, minimum impact and restoration and all that kind of stuff, but I don't. I don't see where we can, where we, where it is that we would use the mitigating area in order to justify a vote on that.
Well, maybe Glenn can help us with that.
Yeah, I would, I would posit that. That because the way the CUP is worded, that your only recourse is to state that the reason that. You would vote in the affirmative that this is taking place is because there is. An agreed upon mitigation for that wetland elsewhere. And that there is a state permit that's been granted. On behalf of doing that very thing.
Right, and it could be condition of, ironically, condition of the conditional use permit.
Correct. It is awkward.
Yeah, and, and it's complicated by the fact that we're supposed to vote on each of these three things individually. Or are you suggesting that we might be able to do it as a? As a combined?
Board always does them individually.
Oh, I, I know. But, but this is an unusual situation, so.
It is. It is.
Thoughts from the board?
Well, I would have said the first and the third. Wouldn't need it. I, I think the second one's the catcher and that would be the one where we'd, we'd have to put the condition in about mitigating and say that the only reason. For allowing it would be that, that there's been an offset, mitigating offset.
So Glenn, what is the procedure that we're going to follow? Are we going to vote on the three conditions and then have a motion or?
We, we, the way we deal with these is that we, we would take each of the conditions, each of the three conditions, vote on them. And if they were all. To pass, then there would be a motion to grant the conditional use permit.
Thank you. So do you need a motion?
Well, the way we have, the way we traditionally do these is that we do a motion on, on each of the, each of the bullets, yes. And, and yes.
I don't understand why we can't do this as a whole since it is a state law that's. Saying we can do this. We don't have anything in our rules that says. That we can't. We're relying on the state law.
Well.
We're not really relying on the state law. And I'm sorry, this is just my perspective. My, my perspective on this is. We have a conditional use permit that allows the planning board to. Grants, grant a conditional use permit for work that's taking place either in the wetland or in the buffer. According to those three criteria, those three criteria. And in this instance, what's happening is. A little different than what is anticipated by the ordinance. The ordinance thinks or reads as if. No time will there ever be a complete filling in a full island, but that there would be times when the town would allow some encroachment in a wetland area. And then these criteria would be used to help the board, help guide the board in allowing for that activity to occur. In this instance, the entire wetland is being eliminated. And that is a process that the state very much allows in their wetlands rules. But the town is able, the town is authorized to have different wetlands rules and we do.
You know, I, I really think that, that we should do these. These. These items within the conditional use permit for this and the others individually, because even, even with that allowance to, to, to do a mitigation of the wetland. You know, that might address one. Maybe two, but maybe not all three. So I, you know, I, I mean, for myself, I could answer, you know, one or two of these. In a way that might not support. The mitigation, whereas, you know, on part of this it could, so. But the board should decide, are we gonna, are we gonna deal with these points individually or, or collectively? If you're looking for guidance, I prefer that we do them individually, but.
And I think we've done that in the past and for consistency, we should continue.
I think that's the best argument that it's. Consistently, we have always done it that way.
I make a motion that we approve. The first condition of the conditional use permit that the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of this land. Excuse me, of land now within the Wetlands Conservation District.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Lynn, second by Richard. Want to make sure we've got the right wording on this. Your, your, the motion is to affirm that that is in fact. True.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay. Remember, we've got to do roll call here.
I would say Glenn, just as, as a rationale there that because of the location of that particular wetland. In the, basically in the middle of that lot. It really. It's, makes it rather unusable to be able to build without pinching upon that. You'd have to build us. A building with a big hole in the middle. To keep that wetland there.
Well, certainly, certainly that argument holds weight for, for what's being proposed.
Yes, and this is a pretty good case. Yeah, that's true. That's much smaller operation would.
I would add that Peter, that based off of the commercial zoning and under specifically permitted uses of 109.5.
Who's speaking, please?
Chris Bashaw.
Oh, yeah, your voice is very soft there, Chris.
Generally not the case with me. But I would, I would also add that specifically under the zoning of that property in that zone. Under 109.5 specifically permitted uses, it says the following are permitted. And it talks about storage facilities, but also specifically materials, distribution plants and truck terminals.
Other questions on this motion? All right, so the motion is to affirm that, that item number one. Proposed construction is essential to the productive use of the land not within the Wetlands Conservation District is, is in fact true. Great, I'm gonna call the roll. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Glenn Koppelman, I'm voting no on that one. But it does pass, six in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. All right, number two.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we affirm the. Conditional use permit number two. That the design and construction and maintenance methods will be such as to minimize detrimental impact upon the wetland. And will include restoration of the site as nearly as possible to its original grading condition. While the wetlands on the site, other than the one. Is not going to be restored. The, there is an agreement. That the applicant. Puts into conservation another parcel of land in the town of Kingston that's already been identified. By the Board of Selectment. Per state law. And I don't have the. RSA.
That's, that's okay. So there's been enough testimony and we know that. State law allows for mitigation in the way, in the way that's being proposed.
Okay.
All right, motion by Lynn, second by Richard. Further discussion on this motion? All right, I'll call for the roll on this one. Peter Coffin?
Without a condition on there, I've got about no on this one.
Oh, I will, hold on. Don't the conditions come with the final approval or should they be?
Lynn, Lynn, you're fading out.
I'm sorry, should the conditions be part of the motion or should they come at the end when we do the one for all three?
Well.
I would think if there's a condition specific to one of the criteria, you should make that part of the, the action on that one criteria.
Then I would add to my motion on the condition that they receive the AOT permit from the state of New Hampshire. And I've already mentioned the purchase of the. Alternative property.
And I think you mean the dredging fill permit.
Yeah, dredging fill. All right, so the motion's been revised. Is the second or?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna start the roll again. Peter Coffin? Peter?
Yeah, that's, sorry, I was trying, trying to get it unmuted. I'm afraid that. Reading it, that, that ours particular town statute strictly, I, I still have to say that it can't be met because it's not being restored.
Okay, so, so you're a no on that one?
That's a no, yeah.
All right, Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
You're on, you're Chris.
Chris? Thumbs up or down?
Yes.
Thank you. And Glenn Koppelman is yes. So that passes by a vote of. Six in favor, one opposed and no abstentions. And. Condition number three.
I make a motion that we affirm that condition number three of this conditional use permit that no alternative route which does not cross a wetland or has less detrimental impact on the wetland is feasible.
Okay.
Motion by Lynn, second by Richard Wilson. Discussion.
May, may I?
Yes.
I, I think this is, it's a valid place again. to indicate the zoning reference that Chris spoke to earlier. Because the thought is that there were going to be large scale developments in this zone. And this um, I, I hate to say oddly placed because it's naturally placed, this naturally placed wetland um, works at cross purposes to that zoning, um, allowance. And I think it's relevant to, to make the point that this is deemed to be one of the areas where we thought there would be large um, large format, large footprint operations in the town of Kingston.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion from the board? Right, I'm gonna call the roll for this one. Peter Coffin?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Glenn Koppelman is a no on this one, so it passes by a vote of six in favor, one opposed, no abstentions.
Now, Glenn, before you, before you go on to voting for the overall conditional use permit. Ellen has asked, um, to consider perhaps allowing public comment on the items that were just discussed. It's not something we typically do during granting of a conditional use permit. Um, but she, she raised it by way of a, um, text message, and I wanted to have the board hear that.
Well, it's, it's very, it would be very unusual for us to do that. It's not that I don't want to, or that I don't think it would be important, but I mean, we very seldom do public comment in the middle of a, of a, of a, of a board vote.
One, one point is public comment shouldn't have a effect on this because we're going by rules, regulations, and ordinances.
Well, I, I'm not gonna make a unilateral decision on it, so it how does the board, how does, how does the board feel?
Probably should have had public comment before any voting, uh, if, if we were gonna do that.
Well, we usually don't.
Yeah, you said before, we're following normal criteria. We normally don't allow public comment at this phase.
Right, it's just a little awkward, but at this point, we've already voted. Um, and all we would have to do is, is have a final vote to confirm what we've already voted on. Um, you know, if you are gonna decide you're gonna take public comment at this point, um, we should probably go back and, and negate our last votes. I, I, I think that as Glenn pointed out, and Richard, um, that's not our normal procedure, and, and that was we were trying to hear, just to follow our normal procedure.
I, I, I guess I would just add that over the last several months, I mean, we, we have listened to a lot of public comment, and you just heard me go through uh, probably twenty or more, uh, letters with comments received since the last hearing. That's, that's not discounting the fact that there are members of the public who are on this call who, who will want to speak. And maybe we should open it up after we do this one, but I really don't. I, I, I have an issue with stopping the process on this particular one at this point. But if the board would like to do that, we can do that.
I think we should continue and finish.
I just move the question?
Alright. There's, there's, there's no question on the table at the moment, but.
To allow public comment?
Well, but, but it wasn't a motion, Richard, it was.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to make it a motion, you can.
You want to make it a motion to continue with our procedure and not allow public comment?
On this conditional.
I think if the board is not looking for public, looking to incorporate public comment, you just go forward. That would be your normal procedure would be to now on the overall CUP.
Alright, I, I, I appreciate Ellen's comment and, uh, after, perhaps after dealing with this CUP, this one, uh, we can then, we can do our public comment period and but we've already voted on all three of the criteria. So the, the issuance of the conditional use permit at this point is is more a customary, uh, procedural thing. Alright. So at this point, I would need a motion from a board member on on either issuing or not issuing the conditional use permit, uh, in the Wetlands Conservation District.
I make a motion that having affirmed conditions one, two, and three of the conditional use permit in the affirmative, I have affirmed them that we grant the conditional use permit for this application.
Second.
So a motion by Lynn, second by Richard, uh, to grant the conditional use permit based on the the affirmation of the three conditions for that permit as listed in the town's zoning ordinance. Questions on the motion from the board? Alright, I'm gonna call the roll on this one. Peter Coffin?
Uh, no.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is a no on this one. So the motion passes, motion carries. Uh, five in favor, two opposed, no abstentions. So the conditional use permit for the Wetlands Conservation District is, is granted. Alright.
Glenn, can I make a, ask a question and make a point of order?
Who is this?
Scott, Scott Willett?
Scott Willett.
Uh, hi, Scott. Yes.
So I, I have no, no problem with not allowing public comment on that conditional use permit. I was gonna support it anyways. Um, but I would like to speak before you do the next conditional use permit, if you could incorporate public comment there.
Well. I, I'm not sure that I want to open up public comment for each and every one of these, uh, but, uh, we're gonna open it up for public comment shortly, and if you have items that, uh, that pertain to those conditional use permits, I suggest that you identify it as such and uh, and we'll have it on the record.
Fair enough.
Thanks.
Glenn, this is Chris. Yeah, I do, I do think, uh, I didn't think it was appropriate for us to interrupt that one, but there has been a lot of discussion from folks about the conditional use permit, so I, I definitely think it's at least appropriate to do public comment prior.
Chris, Chris, I'm having a real hard time hearing you, and I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
I'm gonna try and get a little closer, can you hear me?
And maybe a little bit better.
Um, I, I would support public comment before we discuss the other conditional use permits, because from a lot of the discussion that seems to be going on around the town, a lot of people wanna voice concerns about conditional use permits. But I didn't think it was appropriate to interrupt the vote to do that midstream on the last one.
Oh, okay. So are you, are you suggesting that we do public comment period for each of the conditional use permits?
No, I think we should just do one public comment period, and I feel people can voice their concerns about any of the forthcoming.
Okay. Okay, great. So if folks are okay with that, maybe this is a if this is a good time to do that. Let's see. So the way the way we're gonna do this is that very shortly, uh, Glenn Greenwood will open up the chat function. And if you wish to make a comment or speak to something specific conditional use permits or otherwise that, um, that you put your name and your full address into the chat box. And we will take them, uh, in sequence and call you, call, call upon you and, uh, uh, ask you to unmute yourself and ask your question. So Glenn, if you could open up chat, we'll, we'll do public comment.
I think I did that. Can someone check and see if they can now chat?
Oh. Uh, yep, it's working.
Yay.
It's working, okay, and I can, I can see them Glenn, so I'll just call them as I, uh, as they come in.
Excellent.
Uh, and just for the record, and for the minutes, we're starting this public comment period at nine thirty-two. Okay, Scott Willett, 189 Main Street in Kingston. Scott, go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll start right off, um, first with a compliment to the applicant, because there've been some significant changes since we saw the plan last. The building's been reduced, pulled back. The access road off of, uh, Marshall Road's been eliminated, and there's been a sound barrier um, to help the abutters along Marshall Road. Those are all great things. So my compliments to the applicant for that. Um, as far as the, the, the Wetlands and Shoreland Buffer go, we just need to keep going. The parking areas are still within that three hundred foot setback, and there's a couple of them that I think are problematic. I'm looking at sheet number fifteen right now, and you can see, uh, you know, the parking field in the back of the building has got a couple of, you know, pointy parts to the parking lot that come, that go into the three hundred foot setback and almost all the way into the, to the one fifty line. You know, I think those two parking lots are gonna be problematic, because if you think about snow removal, what's the first thing a plow driver or, or a loader driver will do? We're just gonna push the snow off the end of the parking lot, right? And that would push it right towards the wetlands that we're trying to protect. Um, and if you marry up this plan with the one that Carl showed originally, the slopes plan, which is slide fifty-eight, sheet fifty-eight. It shows coincidentally that in those, those two points where the parking lot is the closest to the wetland, there are some steep slopes down into the river. So I think we're, we're, we're looking at, we're, we're asking for it by having those parking lots so close to the one hundred and fifty foot line that we're just gonna get snow pushed over the edge there. And I, I'm specifically talking about snow because in the conditional use permit for the Shoreland District, it has a, um, a prohibition on dumping of snow containing road salt or other de-ice and chemicals. Uh, specifically called out in the prohibitions in the Shoreland Protection District. I'm reading from two oh five point five, letter F as in Frank. And that's one of the things you have to consider for the conditional use permit to make sure it complies with the other parts of the ordinance. So that snow issue, I zeroed in on that, but I think it's just detrimental to have those two parking areas so far into the Shoreland Protection. So I would like to request that, that the board holds strong on that line, that three hundred foot setback line. And, and, um, also, right in that same corner, there's a little square with some circles in it. If you zoom down to slide thirty-five, you can see that that's actually the septic system. There's a, a big septic field with, um, that's a, the, the square with the circles is a bio-clear structure. I'm not sure exactly, um, whether that's above ground or below ground. But that whole, um, septic system is in the three hundred foot setback as well. So it's not just snow storage or snow dumping, it's also the entire, um, the new septic system is in an area that's gonna take some disturbance. It's gonna take some, um, some engineering to get it in there. But it just is, it's contrary to what this whole zone is about, this whole Shoreland Protection zone is about. It's about protecting that river, right? The big picture is that you shouldn't have a parking lot there, you shouldn't have a septic system there. You shouldn't have a huge septic system with a, with a bio-clear structure there. You should really observe that three hundred foot setback and, and keep the dissimilar uses apart. That's really what this is for. That, I can't think of any more of a dissimilar use than a huge, you know, industrial building and the river. Um, I'd also like to to, uh, just support what, um, Peter Coffin was saying earlier in the night. The two lots that are being subdivided, one B and one C, a lot of grandfathering on those lots, no doubt. But the lot coverage, as soon as you chop them into smaller lots, um, and this may be a question for Glenn Koppelman, the lot coverage on those lots, even with the impervious pavement, do they exceed the max for a lot? Do they, do they become non-conforming because of lot coverage, where before the subdivision?
No, they do not. To the best of my knowledge, and I believe Glenn has checked this as well, that they, they, they still do comply.
They absolutely do.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
And a, a little confusing to look at is that especially the smaller of the lots actually has a large land area that wraps around the other side of the river.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Part of the lots, lot size. And so I, I, I looked at that very closely, um, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, to make sure.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I, it was something that, that threw me off too, Scott, and, uh, I, I raised it with Glenn, and, and we walked through it together and he.
And I, I had the discussion honestly with Carl too, to make sure he could, he could walk me through it, so I would understand.
Yeah, okay, okay, fair enough.
Can you cite what number in two oh five you were commenting on again?
So I was in two oh five point five prohibited uses.
Okay.
Letter F as in Frank.
Okay, thank you.
And then if you go down to the conditional use permit, which is the next one down, two oh five point six letter B, you have the five, five criteria. So the same thing you guys just did, except now there's five criteria. I, I would contend that they've got issues with all five of these by having the parking lot and the septic system in the three hundred foot setback. Um, the, the first, uh, the first couple talk about detrimental effect to surface quality. Well, certainly, you know, anything that's gonna push contaminants down the, down the bank would, would have to, um, um, would, would be detrimental to the river. The second one talks about no discharge of wastewater other than normally discharged by a domestic wastewater system. This is clearly a commercial wastewater system. The third one is about the habitat that we heard in the meeting back in, I think it was November. Um, and the Conservation Commission put up a game camera and caught a long list of, of, uh, of wildlife going through there, and the game camera doesn't lie. So I don't think they can, they can get past number three. Number four talks about prohibited uses. I think that's where the snow storage reference comes in. And the fifth one, I think ties it all together. It's, it says, um, you know, this, this approval should not be inconsistent with the intent of the whole ordinance, and the intent of the ordinance is to protect the shoreline. And the only way you're really gonna protect the shoreline and make sure no one dumps snow or, or abuses the shoreline is just keep everything behind that three hundred foot line. And I know Carl can do it. It's, at, at this point, you know, it's easy, like you said, it's easy when it's on paper. You've got room to maneuver, you know, it's easy to make a change now. It's very hard to make it after the fact. And if it's an enforcement issue, it, I know it's for the town, it's a nightmare. And I'm not just saying all these things just to, just to poke at Carl. I'm saying these things because I think it's in the town's best interest to really hammer out these points now, when it's on paper, and, and prevent anything from, from, uh, from causing the town a lot of trouble and crisis down the road, whether that crisis be something with the river or something with the intersection. You know, last time I talked, I, I pressed a lot on the traffic study to make sure it took into account, you know, the higher standard, because traffic study, if the traffic is a problem at that intersection, repairing the intersection later is just gonna be a lot harder. The last thing I want to add is, um, a, a, just a point off of, uh, Glenn Greenwood's comment about no drones. I think I heard Carl also say no home delivery. So if you could add no drones and no home delivery to the plan, I think that might help with the, uh, some of the abutters comments. And that's it. I'm happy to take questions if, if the board has any.
Glenn Greenwood?
I, I just wanna make one statement, um, and preface it by saying Scott Willett was one of my favorite ever planning board members. Um, on the Kingston Planning Board that I've worked with in my thirty-five years with the board. But Scott, please don't use the Shoreland District line and call it a, a setback line. The setback line is the hundred and fifty foot line. The district line is the three hundred foot line.
Sorry.
And the ordinance is really structured in a way that the district, um, itself allows activity that, that can go on between the hundred and fifty foot setback line and the three hundred foot district line. And I just want that to be very clear now, and I'm not discounting. And I just want that to be very clear now. And I'm not discounting any of your comments about the fact that the entire district is deemed to be an area where the board should be considering impacts to the river. That's why the district is three hundred feet wide. But there's a very different set of standards and allowances in that first one hundred and fifty feet. And I just wanted to make that clear. You kept calling that district line setback line and it isn't.
My, my apologies, but Glenn Greenwood was my favorite circuit rider planner when I was on the planning board.
Yeah, thanks.
And I got the word and I got the phrase.
And the only one.
The purpose of zoning is to keep dissimilar uses apart. I got that view from you. I didn't know what the word dissimilar was until I heard it from you. Okay? And I can't think of a better place to say, man, these are dissimilar. You've got a river and you've got a huge warehouse. So I think it's in, in the town's best interest to keep them apart behind the three hundred foot. I'm going to say it right. District line.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
All right. Well, we've got the mutual admiration society here. This is good thing. Very good thing. All right. Any questions for Scott before I go on to the next commenter? All right. Thank you, Scott. The next one is, it looks like a question and I think we can answer this one pretty easily. It's from Evelyn Nathan at twenty-four Scotland Road. It says, you have already approved the wetlands conditional use permit, but my understanding is that the financing for the mitigation is not finalized. What now happens if it does not go through? Well, I believe that the, that the approval was conditioned upon that happening. Is that not correct? Okay, so if that condition were not met, in other words, if the, if that deal didn't go through, then that permit is not valid. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Thank you. And Evelyn says, thank you. Okay. All right. Next up is Mike Norton of forty-nine Little River Road. Mike, go right ahead. You've got to unmute yourself, Mike. Mike, you're, you're muted.
How's that?
There you go.
Sorry about that. So I actually just want to speak to the storm runoff and kind of reiterate what Dennis and Dana were talking about. So I was a little confused about the mention of a dam. I thought they were talking about the dam on Little River Road. There's actually two dams within about a hundred yards of each other. And when, when Carl was talking, it seemed like they were talking about a dam by one twenty-five. My concern are the two dams on Little River Road. I don't know if many people have been down the road, but it kind of creates a ninety degree turn, kind of a dog leg. And so I'm at forty-nine and the big mill pond is, I'm abutting that. It's right on my property, actually. Across the street is fifty Little River and the Prescotts recently, within the last five years, built a dam, a new dam, which created a new pond just north of the inlet of the existing pond. And then there's the other dam that's at the outlet of that pond. Both of these dams are just before the river crosses under the road. And again, it crosses under the road, the Prescotts and my property goes into the bigger pond, then takes a sharp left and goes under the road again in about, I don't know, an eighth and a mile area. So if you look at the Prescott's dam with the new pond behind it, for example, it's this weekend, we had a big storm and at that level of both dams, the river is running about a foot higher than both of the dams overflowing the dams. On the Prescott's new dam, it's about three quarters of it is concrete. And then to the left is these big stacked boulders. And when there's a lot of water behind it, actually there's water spouting out of the dam between the cracks as if like, I don't know, that story about the person, the kid who has to stick his finger in the dyke to kind of stop. You need about twelve people standing there with fingers in it. So my concern is with the additional runoff with a two-year stormer above that, I'm concerned about what's going to happen with the Prescott's new dam that's already seems to be leaking. If there was, it was to breach that dam, you have the road right there. It will go into the, the river. And then I'm concerned what will happen to the existing dam, which has been there for years and years and years. There's also an additional, if you go kind of, I guess it would be east of the dam, there's an actual, an additional outlet where the water flows down and along the road and it comes to where the dam is and it goes, takes a right shop right turn and goes under. So I'm afraid that that bank there could be overflow and actually collapse and then affect the road and, and both bridges. So I don't know if anyone's actually come down to Little River Road and taken a look at these dams and dealt with that issue. And I was hoping the planning board could ask somebody to do that.
Okay, Mike, we'll, we'll ask the applicant or Dennis maybe if, if you guys have any comment on that question.
Thank you very much.
Carl, any thoughts? Or Dennis?
I'd say Kyle could answer that.
I was, I was saying actually Dennis could go first, but I had myself on mute. But actually, you want to go first and I, but actually I can put up, we, we actually did some graphics on this just to get a sense of scale. And when Mr. Norton had asked that question before and then Mr. Quintel was looking at that, I was wondering if I could share my screen?
Sure.
So I'm hoping you can see this. All right. In summary, if you can see this figure here, just to give you a sense of scale, here's the existing warehouse at two sixty-six, one twenty-five, and then the Little River coming off, this is a red thread here of the Little River that traverses and meanders around. It's about almost four miles long from our site all the way and meandering up to the top of the screen here and, and converging into this next river system. And I'm sure you guys are all familiar with that. And then through the GIS system with DES, you could see the land use types, et cetera. Here's the same red thread wrapping around about three point eight five miles through these different types of land uses. For the most part rural, obviously, and also here's the NRCS soils data for this, this area and a lot of swamp areas, obviously, and you know, all that soils area here is pretty accurate what they're showing here. And here's the, the breakdown of percentages of that. A lot of sandy looms, chapels, hollis, Canton complex, et cetera. There's some old sand and gravel pits that have been redone. There's some mucky peat. It's a mixture. It's a good mixture. It's actually a good sponge of, of, of resource areas you know, along the Little River here. Here's the first section coming off one twenty-five wrapping around the dump. So you guys are all familiar with that. And there's the Old Town Dump wrapping around, down gradient of our site and mitigating that. And the Little River wraps around through this complex. It's all, basically all rural areas here, very undeveloped. For the most part, there's a couple houses and a couple driveways, crossings, farm crossings until we get to this area here with Little River Road. And that's what Mike is probably talking about, right? So just to give you a sense of scale. So this is what we're talking about right in here. If I'm not mistaken.
Yep, that, that's the area he's talking about, Carl.
Yes. So then, and it continues off and it's, it's very, very natural areas. There's only a handful of crossings actually as it continues all the way up to the Exeter River complex. Here's one of the crossings here. This is a typical marshy boggy area of the river with a nice thread behind, behind it. And here is, here's a GIS shot, Google Earth, I believe, a Little River Road in that complex. And you know, Michael knows that area very well. I think Dennis does too. They know this area better than anybody. I mean, this is well down gradient, well downstream of our, of our project and it is one driveway crossing here. So the Little River is really a thread of resource. And you know, it's a real good spongy matter. This is up, up gradient of our site, the Monarch Village area and their wetland buffers and their development up against the hundred footers. And you guys approve that and you're really familiar with that. So that, that was the complex package. I just wanted to give the board a sense of, of scale in terms of, you know, where our site is going back to the year. So we are probably about, you know, three fifths of the way along off one twenty-five to this dam area at Little River Road, all the way out to the Exeter River. Our, our design analysis has to occur at our endpoints, at our project outlets, which is really our design point for, for drainage differentials for this particular piece of our watershed is actually before it gets to the one twenty-five crossing. So everything that we had calculated ends up right here where my hand is at this spot, right before it gets to the town dump, obviously. And then this, this thread meanders through farmlands, old farmlands and swamp wooded areas, et cetera, through a couple, a couple house areas and then into this dam area. We've already analyzed and, and produced, you know, with great effort, all different kinds of permutations of storm events and everything well beyond what the state would actually ask us to do for this site as it affects the Little River and it goes all the way down about halfway on its journey to the Exeter watershed. And in that area is this Little River Road area. So this is your, your sense of scale. I mean, we're, we're, we're not damming up water here. We're not, we're not discharging anything more than what the state would require us to do on this project in terms of mitigation and even more on the stress test that Dennis put us through, which we're happy to do. So by the time we get down to the Little River area down here, a couple of miles downstream, there, we're, there's not going to be any differential impact because our impact analysis has to be at one twenty-five. So whatever's happening on one twenty-five and then you have this whole complex coming through. And it's a huge watershed, even contributory beyond where we have here. I, I can't imagine anyone being able to even measure or even calculate what any impacts would be to the Little River Road area of their dam complex and, and, and what, what they have here. And he already admitted that the, you know, the thing has, has issues, but we're not causing any problems. And that's what we're supposed to be looking at is no, no deleterious or negative impacts from our site. And I, I can't imagine anyone with any type of calculation saying that we're going to have an impact when our calculation has to be right over here at one twenty-five. You know, almost two miles upstream of this thing and then, you know, wraps around the dump, everything else. That, that, it just seems very, very unreasonable. The state would never see this as, as an issue. It, it's, it's a long, it's a long stretch, literally. I just wanted to give you a sense of scale on that. So if, if, if Mike has a specific question on that, I'd like to try to hone in and drill down and, and actually answer the question.
All right.
Give you a context.
Okay. I appreciate that. Can you unshare your screen now, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before I go back to Mike, Dennis, did you have a comment on this?
No, no, I, 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 I don't. I, I think that Kyle is correct. I think that they, he's done a good job with his stormwater analysis, the HydroCAD program and the, the routing that's required. He's met that for, for onsite requirements and, and the rate of runoff is, is what he's basically talking about. My concern was with the volume of runoff, the amount of water that is, is the result of a large storm event. And it all, all it means is, like I said before, it's, the runoff is going to last longer. The, the high, high elevations, the highest elevations are going to be the same rate as pre-development. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, but I, I think that, that, that's, that's the issue here is that there's going to be more water. It's just going to run a lot longer time. And if it's going to be two days, it might be three days. That's all. And, and that should not impact anything downstream as far as the structures are concerned. And, and my, I brought it up because I wasn't, I, I wasn't sure what was downstream and I thought that the applicant should address it. And, and I believe Kyle has addressed it. And, and so that's, that's why I, I thought it would be good for Kyle to explain it tonight to the board.
And also, Mr. Chair, Doug from our office, he just put his four-year-old to bed. So he, I think he, he signed in. He's over here somewhere.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. So if, if, if you have any specific drainage questions, he, he's like one of the best hands down, probably second to Mr. Quintel, but no, really. I mean, we're, we're straight up on all this stuff because we have to be and it, we, we try to use some common sense, but also the landowners themselves, they really know better their land than anybody, obviously, than any engineer or scientist trying to figure something out on paper or calculations. So we do have a high level of respect for that. And when Dennis asked us to look at that, we're like, oh geez, we better look at that. And we're just trying to get a sense of scale. Oh, Doug just signed in here. So I, Doug, I had one very quick question because I know this goes to the CUP, Mr. Chair, and we don't want to leave anything out. But Doug, on, on, I know you did a lot of balancing between volumetric and, and recharge and peak rates of flows and everything. So if you need to chime in on anything, Doug, feel free because we're in CUP mode right now and now's the time to outline those criteria. And, and Mr. Chair, I would like to outline that criteria. We have some notes on that, by the way, that might help the public and the board get their hands around how we're meeting the criteria, especially to the Scots' eloquent points.
Okay. Doug, the, I don't know where, I don't know when you jumped in, but the question from Mr. Norton was the, the potential impact downstream, down near, down near Little River Road. Couple of, couple of small dams there, pond and so forth. So Carl and, Carl and Dennis were addressing that.
I won't, I won't get into too much detail, Mr. Chair, because I know we've gone through a lot of the, the technical side of the con, of, of like the actual drainage analysis, but I would, I would concur with what Dennis had just stated in that the, the main focus, obviously, we have to look at the, at the storm events at our property line, but what Dennis was concerned about was a potential volumetric. If the, if the Little River just dead-ended into a, a low valley right in someone's backyard and an additional volumetric may, may not be able to be absorbed as quickly and could potentially create issues. What Carl's analysis showed is that we do have a very large receiving area for that volumetric. From a rate standpoint, which is the main concern that you would have from, say, what Mr. Norton was concerned about of, of exceeding the capacity of a dam from a rate standpoint, because obviously the dams have their overflow provisions for storm events. We are reducing the rate of all storm events through the two-year, all the way up through the hundred-year design storms. So from a rate standpoint, we, we're actually going to really help the flood or, or exceedance of a culvert or exceedance of a dam. We're significantly improving that because we're actually reducing, you know, just as an example, the twenty-five-year design storm, existing condition is eighty-one CFS. Well, we're dropping down to fifty-nine and a half CFS from our site. So before it leaves our property, we're reducing twenty-two CFS of flow rate. Now, that's a huge improvement from a, when you're looking at, you look at rate when you look at flood issues when it comes to culverts or a dam or something along those lines. And so we're really helping on the rate. And then as I mentioned before, from a volume standpoint, we're matching volume on all the common storm events. So your one, your two-year storm events, we're not increasing any volume. So we're making sure that we're meeting that requirement on very rare, large storms. What, exactly what Dennis suggested will happen is that we will not exceed the rates. So we're not going to create any downstream issues, but we will have water flowing through those devices, maybe for a little bit longer based on the increase in volume associated with some of the very large storms. So I guess that's, that's the more technical side of the piece, but I, I definitely agree with the detailing that Dennis and Carl laid out. And if there's any other specific questions from the members of the board or And if there's any other specific questions from the members of the board or of butters on numbers or, or the volumetrics or rates, then feel free to let me know and I can chime in in more detail.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Uh, Mike, did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Glenn. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mike, you might want to go tell Russell he's got a problem with his dam.
Yeah. Why don't you? He'll listen to you.
Be the good neighbor.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The next, next in our chat feature here looks like, okay, the question, he actually wrote the whole question out, so I'm going to, I'm going to read it. And this is from-
Excuse me, point of order. I do believe we decided earlier at the last meeting that we were actually going to have people testify as though they were testifying in front of us in a live hearing. So I think rather than read the questions, because we're going to get into the same issue we got into before, that we should just let people speak.
Well, uh, sure. Uh, this one is from Paul Liberty of 23 Castle Court in Kingston. Paul, if you could, uh, go ahead and, uh, you can read your question or paraphrase it or however you, however you want to do it.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the board and all of that you've done up to this point. Um, I think you've been very thorough in, in your, your analysis of this whole project. So thank you very much for your services. Um, again, you know, one of the sensitivities here, and I've brought this up in my letters, is a six-foot stockade fence, six-foot acoustic fence, to me is totally inadequate for what is going to be on the other side of that fence. And what that is, is tractor trailers. Tractor trailers are very tall, much taller than a six-foot fence, by all means. And just the exhaust stacks alone are up in the nine to 10-foot range. So I don't see how a nine, a six-foot fence is going to, um, be a sound barrier for something that tall that's putting out the noise. And then you have this wall, this building that is alongside of that is just going to be bouncing that noise off from the building and back out to the development. So I, I, I totally think six-foot, I'm not an expert here, but just the math doesn't work for me that a six-foot acoustic fence made out of vinyl is going to do anything but, you know, be a visual thing than more than a noise barrier. Um, if that were, if they were adequate for these types of applications, I think highways would not be putting these type of highway barriers up. They would be putting six-foot acoustic fence because it's a lot cheaper. Um, and I really think that what's happening here is we're trying to be cheap here, um, and not have more cost impact on this project. But I don't think long-term, we're looking at the development in this, in this residential area, uh, for noise mitigation.
Okay. Thank you for the-
My other question here was, is asking Carl how they derived that this was an adequate height fence and this type of fence was adequate for, for noise mitigation, the tractor trailers.
Well, I was, I was going to open it up to Carl now to ask him to respond to, to that. And so Carl, floor is yours.
Okay. Uh, sorry, unmute. Uh, I, I'd like to share my screen and put back that, uh, that little plan that we're talking about, uh, here. So, uh, I think you can see my screen. I'll make this bigger. All right. So, uh, I think you can see my screen now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So on the left-hand side here is Monarch Way, the King's Landing, uh, condominium association. Uh, and then there's the, uh, this lot here, uh, Andrea and, and Alice Kenter own it. Uh, there's a big field out here and then there's a wooded buffer in this area that they own. And then we have a small area of woods in here and then a, a pond feature and then the trailer area and then the building off to the right. So that's sort of the, uh, uh, view, uh, summary of what we're, we're looking at here. Um, the, uh, just in context, I know the chair, uh, just summarized this earlier, but since it came up, uh, so we're in the commercial district and the, uh, R4111, which is this field, this open field, that's in the commercial district, uh, but it's residential use because their house is over located in this area here. You can see that. Uh, so just to give you a sense of scale, this is where we, we are. There, Monarch was put in under special permitting considerations. And, uh, one side of the fence is a residential district. I mean, sorry, the road, the other side of the road is commercial district. So, you know, at some point, you know, e- even right across the street from you, within buffer criteria, uh, 50 feet, it could have a commercial use here, just like you have up and around the other side of the street and everything. This commercial use is all, all through here. Um, certainly not a warehouse, uh, but you know, this is, it, it's in the master plan for, this, this particular site was master planned for that. And that master planning for buy right truck terminals and warehouses was put in long before Monarch project was approved. And, you know, I'm just spelling it out there because, uh, at some point, you know, I, I, we, we've, we made a lot of changes through here and we've basically cut off everything on this area and, and, uh, cut off drives and, 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 and everything. And we did that out of respect. But at some point, you know, it is in the commercial district. This owner has owned this property a lot longer than you've lived there. This was a condition of the permitting of Monarch. And I remember, and you can even look into this, and there's people zooming right now that remember this and tried to remind the, the community that Monarch was put in and they're specifically reminded that this is almost spot zoning. It is a spot zone. And it's right across the street from a commercial district. There's nothing getting around in that. There's nothing. And our site has been around decades earlier than that for this particular use that we're proposing. And there was no problem, was very, very eloquently discussed that Monarch, this housing complex, very tight, packed in, talk about being next to the wetlands, right up against the road, right across the street from a commercial district. And, and you recognized that. The people that did this development that you bought that from said, absolutely, we understand completely. We have no problem because there's commercial everywhere. No problem whatsoever. And my client who's owned this thing forever, never said a word. We never said anything. We didn't have any complaints. We figured, you know, he'd be a gentleman about it. And, and, uh, so anyhow, we, we made a lot of design changes to eliminate anything out here. There's no requirement in the regulation about a sound wall, but there are requirements about buffers, et cetera. There is a requirement in the ordinance about sound and we would meet that. So, you know, how big a sound wall, how, how, how far do we do, you know, if we put in a big sound wall, someone's going to say it's ugly. They don't want to look at it. Uh, there's noise ordinance for a reason. There's emission standards for a reason and we're going to follow those. And, uh, I, I think at, at this point, people are sensing that we're going to just keep going on and on while we're done. I'm just telling you, we've done more than enough out here, way more than what the ordinance requires us to do, way more than the regulations. And this landowner has owned this for decades and he never said a word about this going in. And we're trying to be gentlemen, but I'm just telling you right now, we're not going to give up anymore. We've already given up way, way too much. And I'm just saying it like it is because, uh, at some point we have to say, no, there's ordinances and we're going to follow those. And now we're getting penalized. Uh, and they, and people sense, I heard it at this hearing, oh, well, you're almost there. You're almost there. Why don't you follow the regulations? Well, I'm going to spell out what the regulations are when we get to that point later, Mr. Chair, for the CUP, for the shoreline. And, uh, there's a big misconception of people misleading others on what the regulations are. And I'm going to spell them out because I think I need to do that. But anyhow, how big of a sound wall are you going to put up? And at some point, they're going to say it's not big enough. And then at some point, they're going to say it's too ugly. But we, we have to meet this, uh, noise ordinance and we're going to do that. Sorry to get a little emotional about that.
All right. Thank you, Carl.
So Glenn, am I allowed to kind of have a comment after that?
Well, I, I think if you, if you wish to comment, you can do so. And then sorry, that'll sort of wrap up your, uh, your part, I think.
Sure. Thank you. Um, again, there is not a, a homeowner in this development that was aware of what the builder did to put this development in. We all came from other cities, towns, states, whatever, to come here. We came here knowing that this was a residential community and across the street was a farm, a farmland or an empty field, not knowing that it was ever commercial or there was going to be an 800,000 square foot warehouse built, built there. What I think, what I'm feeling like right now is exactly what I said earlier, that the fence that you're proposing is totally inadequate. You know it's inadequate and that it's not going to meet, it's not going to address the noise that this residential development is going to experience from, from that development, being there with all these tractor trailers all night long. It's just not going to, it's not going to work. It's an empty field out there and we're going to have this noise. So I, you know, I understand your position, but I, I think this is important to this community. It's important to this development where I live. And, um, I, I express my dissatisfaction with your proposal.
Okay, Mr. La Liberty. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Obviously, obviously the, the, the board can certainly choose to weigh in on this during its discussion. And, um, uh, they've, they've heard, uh, they've heard the concerns of, of you and others from, uh, from over on that, that way. And, uh, and we've heard the applicant's response. So, uh, the board is certainly, certainly free at this point or later on to, to get into a discussion about that if, uh, if they wish to pursue it further with the applicant. I think right now though, uh, I should probably continue on with, uh, with public comment. Looks like the next, next one would be Jocelyn Lavoy of 17 Castle Court. And, uh, I see you're there and you, you're unmuted. So go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My question is, um, and I, I may have missed something in this whole process, but I have attended these, uh, meetings. At what point will the impact of traffic on Route 125 be considered in the decision of the board whether or not to approve this project? Is that part of the deliberation or consideration over or is it yet to be had? I, my question is, uh, you know, how many trucks of all sizes will be coming and going on 125 on a daily basis as a result of this project?
Okay. Uh, the-
Thanks.
The number of trucks was identified in the traffic study that the applicant presented as part of the application. Uh, the town, through the planning board, hired a separate engineering firm to do a peer review of that study and came back with a general concurrence that the, the applicant's numbers were, 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 were on, on track and correct, uh, based on the intended use. And, um, the, how do I put this? The, you asked earlier if, if there's any further discussion about that. It, there isn't a, there isn't a speci- unlike, unlike what we're dealing with right now on the conditional use permits, um, the, the, the traffic is a, is, is, is an issue that, that's dealt with as a, as a part of the project as a, as a whole. And, um, I mean, if, if, if there are any issues regarding the traffic, um, that, that the board or the public feels haven't been adequately addressed, then, uh, then they can be discussing it at any point in this process. And the final vote on the project itself has not happened yet. Um, and I cannot tell you when it will be. We have to, we have to go through the three conditional use permits first and we have to have all of the information that the board has requested satisfied. And, um, when the board is at that point, it will, uh, it will proceed to a, to a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Uh, looks like Richard Tracy of 17 Monarch Way. Richard, are you, there you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to weigh in on that fencing too, because, uh, I watched Carl, uh, his hand going over the plan and it also went over my house a couple of times, which shows how close I am. And, uh, I'm wondering, I still have a bit of loss. He, he said he approved it, uh, by adding a fence that would now go to the ground, I, I think he said. And then, uh, some kind of a connection between the boards that was different than before. I don't know how much that's going to improve the acoustics, but if Carl is concerned about building a fence up so high, everybody's going to say it's ugly. There are acoustic materials which you could attach to a wooden fence that would greatly improve that noise level. It reduced a decibel amount. And, uh, I'm wondering if that's something he would consider, because if you have a wood fence of any kind, it passes a certain amount of, of noise. And the only way, if it's just solid wood, is if you thicken the fence to control that. So I'd like to know if, uh, if God would consider doing something like that. It would still look pretty good. And, uh, I would respectfully request the board to consider that, uh, in their deliberations. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Tracy, thank you very much. The board certainly heard your comment. Uh, it's been captured for the record and I don't know if the applicant has any response beyond what they've already said, but I certainly give Carl the opportunity to respond if he wishes to.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was, uh, I was getting some feedback from the client's representative on this. Uh, so I apologize about that. Uh, and Mr. Chair, what was the question again? You wanted me to respond to?
It's, 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 it's sort of, sort of, uh, further to, to the, uh, to the other question from Mr. La Liberty about the, um, the, the adequacy of the proposed acoustic barrier and whether or not it could be enhanced to provide better, uh, better protection.
Okay. Uh, we, we included in the plans, it's called an acoustic fence. Uh, it's a special design for that. It's, but it's, uh, it's only, uh, it is six feet high. This, we, we did not want to, uh, it, it's really not a cost issue, but we didn't want to put in a highway barrier in there, uh, because that would just look terrible. But, uh, um, I guess the point is there's an ordinance on noise and we would meet that. If, if we're in violation of that ordinance, then, uh, we would be in violation of the site plan and permits and we would be forced to do noise mitigation. Um, the gentleman is correct that, uh, there are certain materials you can add to a fence. Uh, there's, uh, several market, uh, materials you can use for outdoor fencing that attach to the inside portion facing, uh, the warehouse. Uh, they're basically acoustic, uh, blank, they're, it's a hybrid material, acoustic, um, fabrics and, and panels actually that you can put in, that, uh, and he's shaking his head up and down. Uh, so there's, there's several different, uh, materials that you can use for that other than just an acoustic wood fence, which is, um, solid to the ground. Uh, the, the big thing on acoustics is if you have slats or, or cracks or anything, uh, the sound just kind of just travels right through there. So if we have solid to the ground and we have tongue and groove and it's a thick material, it helps actually quite a bit. It's, 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 it's an amazing improvement on acoustics versus just a standard, uh, stockade fence. And that's what we proposed to put in there, uh, knowing that we took everything out other than, you know, the development on our pad site itself. Um, there are panels that we could put in and we would be happy to put those in if, if, uh, we are found to be in violation of the noise ordinance. Uh, and if that doesn't work, then we would be in violation. We'd have to do other things to, to make it right. But I, I guess, you know, there's, there's regulations for a reason and we're going to follow those. Uh, I, I just can't, you know, I don't know how much we can, I, I don't think that, uh, Uh, I, I just can't, you know, I don't know how much we can, I, I don't think that, uh, we can go on and on and on. I think that, uh, my gut feel is I'm just going to say it is the, the people, the, the, the fine people that live on Monarch. They're not going to be happy with anything until we just basically take this project away. And guess what? This project's not going away. Uh, we meet this criteria. We've been working on this for a couple of years. Uh, I, I just, we just, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give anymore. I'm sorry. Uh, at some point, we try to do the right thing and follow the rules and people keep moving the goalposts. And at some point, it's just not fair. And I guess that's just, uh, I guess there's other avenues we could take on that, but, uh, I think the planning board would recognize that we're doing the right thing and, and we're, we're working with everybody. Uh, but they keep moving the goalposts when someone, you know, stuck in those monarch houses and we never say anything about it because we're trying to be, you know, kind people. And now we're being penalized because they came in after, uh, it's just, I don't know. How, how much acoustic paneling and fencing do you want to put there? No matter what I propose, you guys would say it's not good enough. That's just not fair. And that's not how the laws are, are written in New Hampshire. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know what you want. If I say six feet, seven feet, you're going to want 10 feet, you're going to want 20, then you're going to say no. Uh, it's just ridiculous. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just losing, uh, losing my faith in the system. If, if we're going to that point, uh, we keep moving the goalposts.
All right, I, I'm going to respond. Gentlemen, gentlemen, I'm going to respond to this because, um, the public has the right to ask questions and make comments. Uh, nobody's moving goalposts here. Uh, I think everyone wants to get to the right endpoint. And just a point of clarification, uh, the, the, uh, the King's Landing of development, um, was, uh, put there under, uh, not under any kind of special arrangement. That was an overlay district that the town voted in, uh, which includes that parcel and, and some land, uh, uh, beside it, uh, specifically for, uh, certain types of, uh, development. And I, I, there, there was no, you know, I, I'm getting the impression from some of the things that were said that there, that that development was put there under some unusual set of circumstances. Well, that's, that's really not the case, but be that as it may. Yes, it, there are ordinances and regulations that, that doesn't mean that in certain cases, uh, going above and beyond those, you know, might be the right thing to do in certain cases. And so, you know, that's, that's, that's every, it's certainly up for discussion. We, we, we know where the applicant stands at this point. Carl's made that very clear. And, um, uh, and we've heard, uh, Mr. La Liberty and Mr. Tracy on, on their position on that as well. So, we can discuss it as a board as we go further along here, but I think we've, uh, I think we've heard both sides on that one. And I'm not sure that, uh, I'm not sure that, for those two individuals anyway, that there's a middle ground, but maybe the board can get some discussion going.
Mr. Chairman, may I add, uh, one, one final comment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to, uh, respond to Kyle's comment that we never want to stop. We're going to add more and more. Number one, we're not against the project. We just want to be noise free. And the only thing I'm suggesting, Carl, is we, we're going to meet you in the middle. If you don't want to build a big highway fence, always say it is place some more material in back of the wooden fence, the same height. And everybody will be happy. It's a carbonless. And thank you for that.
We, we, we can do, we can add in a, uh, a, uh, absorption barrier and there's many different products for that. And, uh, we'll, we will do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right. Very good.
We're not going to ask for something bigger.
Great. Thank you very much, guys. All right. I've got one more, uh, one more. It looks like Mr. Norton of Forty-Nine Little River Road, uh, has another issue to discuss. So go ahead.
Glenn, just before that?
Whoa, yes.
Um, Ellen sent you one letter that we received tonight. Did you see that?
No. Where?
She emailed it to you.
Oh, well, I'm not checking email, but I, 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 I can look, I can look while, while you're going through this next discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mike, go ahead. Mike Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you answer me?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to point out, just so everybody knows that regarding the height of the fence, every tractor trailer that goes into that site will be thirteen feet, six inches tall. So it's seven feet, six inches taller than a six foot fence. So that's just a point of information. Last meeting, Mr. Chairman, I, we wanted to talk about traffic and you asked me to put it in a letter form, so I did. I know you don't want me to read it, so I was hoping I could just jump in and just do some quick, uh, points here. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. So the issue that I have is that, um, the traffic study, because you don't know who the applicant, who the actual client will be and what their business model is, is you can't tell exactly what the traffic is going to be. You just have to base it on averages. So I would just try to have a simple, try to think of a simpler way to do it. And a simple way to do it is just like if you were looking at a house. If I was to ask you how many people would live in this house, you would simply look at the number of bedrooms and, um, the number of bathrooms and the size of the septic system. And you could get an idea of what the maximum number of people would live, would be to live in that house. You can do the same thing by looking at this site plan. All right. So when it comes to trucks, the only things that you would need to know to determine the maximum number, so I want to make sure that I'm pointing that out, is the number of docks, which I believe is a hundred and forty-nine now. The hours of operation, which is twenty-four hours a day. And then, and then what you're missing is the average time it takes to either to load or unload a tractor trailer. Uh, my thirty-six years in the business tells me the average is about an hour and a half. This, for this, um, exercise, I would suggest we just double it. Make it three hours. So there's not a lot of confusion or argument about that. Um, so what you'd simply have to do to figure out the number of tractor trailers that would visit the site in a day is do some simple math, right? So if you had twenty-four hours and three hours to unload a typical tractor trailer, that means that you can unload an average of eight tractor trailers at one dock in the course of a day. If you multiply that by a hundred and forty-nine, you get one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two trac- tractor trailers. What that means is that this building was designed by the applicant to basically handle a maximum of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two tractor trailers. To get the total trips, you would just multiply that by two and you would get two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four tractor trailers. One thing I just want Kyle to address is truck slips. Nobody's talked about truck slips. I don't think most people know what a truck slip is. I want to point out, I think, and Kyle, please correct me if I'm wrong. Last count, there were two hundred and forty-three truck slips. That's almost a hundred more than there are docks. Now, a truck slip, how is a truck slip used? It's basically a big, huge parking space where you park the trailer end of a tractor trailer. So the question is, well, what do you need that for? Typically, the typical scenario is simply this. A truck driver shows up with his load. He checks in to find out that all of the receiving docks are full. And then what, and then if there's enough people in the queue, which is the line of trucks waiting to get a receiving dock, rather than have them, and this is important, line all the way out onto Route 125, that driver will be directed to a truck slip where he will drop his trailer. Then he will leave sometime later on that day or perhaps the next day, they will dispatch the yard tractor, which sits there at all times to go out and grab that trailer, bring it to the dock, unload it, and then bring it back out to another truck slip and leave it there. So at a later time, a truck will pick it up. So it's really important to understand that the applicant has designed this site to accommodate as many as two hundred and forty-three additional trailers sitting on that site in addition to the eleven hundred and ninety-two tractors and trailers that are going there in a day. Okay? Now, if you, if you multiply that two hundred and forty-three by two, that's an additional four hundred and whatever it comes out, eighty-six. So theoretically, maximum wise, you could take the twenty-three, eighty-four and add four eighty-six for a total of twenty-eight hundred and seventy. So please don't forget the board members when you're analyzing this site to please think about the truck slips. It's really important. Last thing is how many people will be working there and what does that do to the traffic? So most people will say, well, this, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's five hundred and seven parking spaces there. So if you just multiply, some people would say, well, just multiply five hundred and seven times three shifts. That gives you the total, but you really can't do that because you have to have some spaces available for visitors and contractors. You also have to have a certain number of spaces empty so that when you have a flow of track between shifts, it's an easy flow and you have people who can park right away when they pull in. You can't have all the spaces accommodated. So traditionally, and I talked to a friend of mine who's in the business, he's a consultant, he owns a business, it's an industrial consultant business. And he says, if you leave twenty percent of those spaces empty, that'll accomplish that. So if you take five oh seven, you take twenty percent out, you get a total of about four hundred spaces. But what I'm trying to suggest to you is that the applicant believes they will have four hundred spaces being full maximum in a shift. You multiply that times three shifts, that's twelve hundred people. So what I'm saying is that the applicant has designed this site to accommodate twelve hundred people working there every day. If you multiply it by two, it's twenty-four hundred. If you add all that together, you get four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four vehicle trips, not including the additional four hundred and somewhat for the truck slips. So because it's so much, it's difficult to find out what the actual numbers are, just look at the site plan and do some simple math and it tells you, again, with the maximum number of tractor trailers that are expected on the site and the maximum number of employees that it can accommodate. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Carl, do you care to, um, respond or would you?
Uh, well, there's a couple of things I would like to make sure that Mr. Pernod is still with us. And he has a microphone.
Uh, what, he is, he is with us and he's
Okay, and, uh, he's going to explain the standards that we have to follow on this, uh, by the DOT uh, traffic study criteria and what the town expects us to do. And, uh, you know, and Steve can just summarize a couple of things on that. And and, uh, Mr. Norton, you know, we know, uh, you're in the business and, uh, there's many different kinds of, uh, warehouses and truck terminals. As you very well know, you can have a big, big building with only a couple docks. We can, you can have a small building with, you know, a lot of docks. It's really, uh, uh, it's, it's not just adding things up and multiplying them up by twenty-four hours. And I can explain that. Uh, and, and I, obviously you know that very well. Um, uh, the reason, there's other reasons why we have cross docks on, uh, larger warehouses and you know that very well. And the cross dock, uh, functionality isn't just trying to, uh, get, you know, uh, load up a truck in an hour, hour and a half and get it out of there and, uh, and just multiply this out by twenty-four hours. You know that. Uh, you know that very well, actually. Um, but the bottom line is, in answer to the question about the truck trips and the employees, is, is there standards we have to follow on that? And, uh, we wouldn't get a permit without following these specific standards that the DOT makes us follow with the calculations. Uh, but, you know, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Pernod just very, you know, summarize those. And then we can get into, uh, multiplying out and counting, counting spaces if you'd like.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is my, uh, audio working better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
We can see you too.
Well, that's a treat. So the, uh, before, or actually, at the onset of this study, we conducted a scope meeting with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. That was the reason why we prepared the study and submitted it both to the town and to the state. They specified, as they always do, ninety-nine percent of the time, to rely on the I T E trip generation manual. That's the standard that is used in New Hampshire and across the country. And in our report, we described how we arrived at our trip estimates. And those estimates are based on actual sites throughout the United States, uh, that are compiled by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And we did not lowball the estimates. If anything, we tried to be on the high side. And all I can tell you is that the numbers that we come up with from I T E, which is what the New Hampshire Department of Transportation wants us to use, is not even close to what Mr. Norton, uh, was describing. I was trying to jot down numbers and follow his math. But quite frankly, at this hour of the night, it's not possible. The, the other thing that we know, and I know from experience, that all sites have hourly variations in traffic demand. They don't crank a hundred percent every hour of the day. That there are high points and there are low points. And you see that in our study where we looked at a morning peak hour, uh, estimate and an evening peak hour estimate. So there are fluctuations. Uh, I suppose, you know, if you wanted to make some worst case assumption that everything's a hundred percent max, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, you could come up with higher numbers. But that's not what the DOT is looking at. And that's not what I need for me to come up with a mitigation plan that will make this site work. And we've been through that mitigation plan before. We're calling for widening of the highway, providing dual exit lanes, auxiliary turn lanes, signalization of an intersection. That, so the numbers I used came up with that mitigation plan and I am totally comfortable that that's going to handle uh, this site and, and any typical, uh, user that comes in. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pernod.
Can I speak, Glenn?
Okay, Mike.
So just one last point. I said maximum because I think the planning board has to consider what the worst case scenarios. I think that everyone will agree with that. And I just want to say one other thing, or two other things. That their study is based on historical data, not specifically to the site. We can look at the site and look at the specifics. They wouldn't build it with a hundred and forty-nine docks, five hundred spaces and two hundred and forty-three, uh, slips if they didn't intend to use them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right, before we, before we go any further, um, I was reminded, I was actually sent, uh, an additional uh, letter from, uh, let's see, this one came in January five.
Glenn? Before you read that, can we close public comment?
Well, this is public comment.
Well, you read the letters before you went into public comment before, so.
Okay.
I just don't want the letter to bring up more and more. I mean, it's getting late. We're listening to the same arguments over and over again.
Right. That, 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 yes. All right. All right, for consistency's sake, we'll close public comment then at ten forty PM. I'll go back to that stack of letters that I read earlier in the evening and add this one to it. Dated January five of twenty twenty-one, and this is from John and Cindy DiStefano, twenty, uh, twenty-six Monarch Way. And, um, essentially, uh, uh, in opposition to the project and citing uh, most of the items that, that have been mentioned by, uh, by others. Checking to see if there's anything in here that's, that's all different. Here's, here's not, uh, traffic, uh, impact on natural resources. Uh, pleased that the one oh seven entrance is now gone. But in general opposed to the project. Okay. All right. So that's into the record along with the others that were read or, or cited, not read, but cited. Okay. Oh my gosh. It's quarter to eleven. I've got to tell you, I, I, I know we're moving along here. I I'm not sure how effective the board is going to be. I see lots of, lots of hands on faces and, uh, all right, we, we had started with the conditional use permits. I don't know if the board is, uh, is of a mind at this time to, uh, to continue on, uh, with that. Richard, do you have something?
I will make a motion that we
I will make a motion that would continue to another, the next meeting because I personally want time to research the difference between the hundred and fifty and the three hundred foot line to see what that means. And I think everybody is getting very tired and these conditional uses are going to take quite a bit of time.
Well, to do them right, you know, they do take time. And, and they're there for a reason, so.
And I'm assuming the applicant wants the, uh, first time available.
And I'd, I'd second that motion and I just want to say that, uh, since everyone knew about all the conditional use permits on the table at this time, I would just like to advocate that maybe we don't do a, we don't do a public comment to rehash it all again prior to moving into them during the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Rich. And Chris, do you second that?
Well, we haven't put a date and time yet.
I, I, I know. I'm going to go back, but, but I, I want to make sure if, if, if I heard you as a second, Chris. You're muted, so I don't know what you're saying.
He did mute it. He did, uh, second it.
He did? Okay. All right. Now, you, we need, if we're going to do this, we need a time and date certain. Richard?
I need to know what's available.
Well, whoa, someone's got to help me, Glenn.
Well, we have, we have a meeting next week to do the Greenwood Pond condominium subdivision.
Yeah, I don't know if we have time to post that and also get the responses back that we asked for earlier in the meeting.
What responses are we waiting for?
Well, there was, they can demonstrate, uh, how they were going to, um, handle the, uh, ten percent and answer all Da- Dana's, um, questions and put them in the, in the minutes. Uh, Glenn had mentioned, uh, requesting a, uh, uh, actually said no drones or maybe no aeronautical activity, uh, just so that we can put the drone issue to bed, um, be put on the plans.
Um, those are part of the conditional use that we're looking at.
Right. Now, the conditional use permit, um, that we're looking at, uh, they did have.
Of an approval if we got to that point.
Yeah, it had to do with the wetlands and that, uh, was something that Dana had, had asked for more information on. Uh, they said they would, they would, they would comply and, and, uh, and we're going to make some modifications. I don't know if that's enough time. I think, uh, Carl could, could answer that.
I, I think we can do it for, for next week. Um,
Well, the other, another option I'm going to throw on the table for you to consider, Carl, would be the week after that, February second. I don't know, Glenn, if we have other stuff on that agenda?
I don't believe we do.
But that's an open meeting and it would.
Could we do February second and, uh, we would be focused on, uh, the final items and, uh, we'd be happy to, uh, take in these comments. Now that I've calmed down, I'm sorry.
Ellen, Ellen is, Ellen is indicating, Ellen is indicating that the cons comm is not meeting again before the next meeting.
Yeah, we, we, we've been asking to meet with them and, uh, and we've been hearing silence. So I, I don't know. We've been trying to meet with them for a long time. They, they just can't seem to want to do.
Margie, is Margie still on the, on the call?
First of all, they can, they can do a special meeting if they need to.
Well, that's what I was, that's, Margie is still on the call.
Yes, I am.
Margie, is it possible for you to meet before February second?
Yeah, we'll have to. We'll have to post a meeting. And it, as we were told, we can't have meetings that aren't public, so we can't just gather around somewhere. But yeah, we can post a meeting. That's next week. Two weeks.
Right, that would be two weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll change my motion to February second.
At six forty-five?
I think it's important that we put it on February second because the last time that the Greenwood, um, pond came before us, it took a very long time.
Yeah, it got messy.
Yeah, and I, and to have a hearing like this after that one would make for a night even later than this.
And I would like to be able to comment on that. So we need to meet. So I'll call a meeting.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Margie.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what, while we have, while we have Margie on the line, I, I just, is there any way that you can email us or let us know? We'll meet with you anytime you know that. It, we just can never, uh, we can never communicate. We can't get any answers or anything on meetings. So
Okay.
if you want to meet, we'll meet you anywhere, anytime. Just let us know and it, uh, we, we look forward to doing that.
Right. We will get on it.
Thank, thank you so much.
Okay.
Uh, Margie, do you know how to reach Carl?
No, I was just going to say that. I don't.
I, I think, uh, just, uh, if you could just coordinate it through Mr. Greenwood, he's very good at, you know, all you have to do is send him a quick email and tell him where and what time and, and we'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Glenn, you can do that, right?
Yeah, I believe I have Margie's husband's email, actually.
Okay. Well, mine is like the same. It's Margie Free Maples.
Excellent. Excellent.
Oh.
It's really, you get two for one that way.
That's beautiful. Thank you, Margie. I will, I will get touch with you.
Okay, well, hopefully between the three of you, you guys can work something out and for, for getting together. All right, so, so Richard, we, we have a motion, I heard, to continue this to February second at six forty-five. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Chris, you were the second? All right, any further discussion? Uh, I need to call the role on this, uh, Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Robin DuGuey?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn is a yes. All right. And for members of the public, this is your notice as well for this continuation. And, uh, uh, if you wish to join us again, then, uh, February second at six forty-five is the next time we will talk about this. Okay, thank you all for joining us and so.
Before, before we get off the, uh, the subject, I, I know that Ellen sent out an email saying that the, uh, Brentwood planning board had wanted to weigh in on this, but they couldn't get.
Conservation Commission, not planning.
Oh, Conservation Commission, thank you. Um, and I was wondering if, if perhaps, um, because they aren't here right now, that, um, notification of this could be sent to them, um, so that they, uh, have that opportunity.
I can do that. I can do that tomorrow, Peter.
Okay, I just wanted to wait because, because it is a D R I and, and, uh, you know, if they have requested that and they aren't here to get this information.
Well, if they're aware of it, why haven't they been communicating with us?
They, they, they have and they, their problem was we didn't get electronic copy on until
Oh.
um, early this week, I think.
Oh, oh, I see. I see.
So they, they will absolutely be told that our next meeting is the second.
Okay, great, thanks. All right. All right, moving on, we've, uh, we don't have any critical correspondence according to Glenn and nothing that has been passed to me. Uh, we've done both sets of minutes. Is there any other business to conduct tonight?
I hope not.
All right, then, without objection, I will adjourn this meeting at ten fifty-one P M. And thank you all, and we will be joining, uh, this, we'll be back together again next Tuesday for the Greenwood Pond application and then.
Next Wednesday, Glenn.
Oh, sorry, Wednesday, it's a different, it's the twenty-seventh, right?
Yeah, please, it's, it's.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And, uh, and then February second for the continuation of this hearing for, uh, for two sixty-six, one, one twenty-five. Okay, thank you all. Have a good night. See you next week.